Call the April 7, 2025 Crestille City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Metten.
Present.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Bobby Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Present.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ray Solomon.
Here.
And Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Okay, now, thank you.
All right. We do have a very large crowd here this evening, so I would ask council's concurrence if we would deviate from the agenda and go to the community and economic development portion of the agenda for this evening. Before we start, we do have a large crowd here tonight. Everyone that wishes to be heard will be heard. We certainly ask for your cooperation, your patience, and for you to respect the person that is speaking at the podium or at the city council at the time. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to our Community and Economic Development Director Patrick Ainsworth for some opening comments in regards to, well, let's do this first. Let's deviate to number six, and let's take care of the A and D storage special use first. That one should be quick, and we can move on from that. So I will turn it over to Patrick for some opening comments in regards to case number SU 25-1-3-1, the request of A and D storage seeking a B3 special use for a self-service storage facility located at the southwest corner of Renwick Road and Boreo Drive in Crestille, Illinois. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The petitioner is here tonight, and as the mayor mentioned, there was a plan commission meeting for a special use for the southwest corner of Boreo and Renwick Drive for a self-storage facility. This case may look familiar, as this came before the city council in 2023. The materials of the essence of this case was the current owner has a buyer for this project. The buyer would like to put asphalt in the inner drive area versus concrete. Concrete was part of the approved materials from the 2023 case. Because the city zoning ordinance does not have a mechanism to change that when the city council approves such a thing, we needed a new special use, and this allowed a new one-year timeframe to commence. There was a special meeting on March 20, nope, that's not right, March 27, 2025. The Plan Commission opened the public hearing, gave a favorable recommendation of 6-0 for this to move forward to the city council, and the petitioner also came before the city council on February 24 for an update, just to let the city council know that this case was coming, and they also requested for this to go straight to the April 7, 2025 agenda to help with their timeline. And thank you, city council, for making that business-friendly decision. The petitioner is here tonight to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay, Rudy Serf, the applicant Rudy, anything you would like to add in regards to this case?
We just appreciate your guys' time and look forward to hopefully getting this site built in the near future.
Okay. I will ask city council if they have any questions of either the applicant or of Patrick.
I have a question that was brought up via email, which I missed the call from, what was it? Who works with you? I forgot. I just, my head is blank. Steve Golden.
Oh, Golden.
So I ended up emailing him, and he said, I just want it for record, since he's not here, that you can answer that question.
Sure.
The question that the resident had, all these plants and bushes and trees and evergreen that you guys putting around the fence, if anything dies, will be, you guys gonna replace it?
Yeah, I believe they have to, that's part of the landscape plan and the requirements for the landscape.
I understand, but you're gonna be updating it if something, or something dies, basically.
Yes.
Okay. He did say that, but I want that for record, since he's not here. So that's the only question that came up after that meeting.
Anybody?
Yeah, I just noticed one thing on page five of this that we received, number four. I believe there's a typo with the time for the keypad from 9:00 PM, it said to 7:00 PM. I believe that's 7:00 AM.
Yep. Thanks for that finding. That was gonna be my one request to make a motion to make that from PM to AM. Sorry.
Anybody else from council? All right, anybody in the audience that would like to make comment for or against the request of case number SU 25-1-3-1, the request of A and D storage seeking a B3 special use for a self-service storage facility located southwest corner of Renwick Road and Boreo Drive in the city of Crestille. Please step to the podium, state your name. For the record, your address is optional. Second request, anyone would like to speak for or against the approval of case SU 25-
Go ahead. My apologies. Hi, my name is Christina Pershey. I have a quick question, and I wasn't present at the last meeting, so I don't know if it was already addressed, but per the billing codes, it requires concrete, so I'm wondering why it was agreed that asphalt would be approved when the homeowners, if we are to do any work on our driveways, we have to now put in concrete. So we had a really hard time with our driveway, so that's why-
That was changed. We no longer have to put concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, I clarified that on the Arbor Glen group, that we no longer have to do concrete. I think the city, I asked if they can post about it on social media and update our owners, but they haven't.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And in fairness, Chris, all this is, that's about, that's all this is about tonight, is that the initial one, when we first did this back in '23, I think it was, he wished to have concrete as the main hard surface, and then as we've gotten now to the third owner, I believe, on this property, he's requesting to change it to asphalt. So that's the special use that's being correct, that's being asked for, correct, Patrick?
No, that's not true. The asphalt is only around-
The main part.
The main part. The entrance is gonna be cement, your inside, the inside's gonna be concrete, it's just in between, but the whole front, everything as we promised the residents is gonna be the same.
Okay.
May I correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else like to speak for or against this case? And third call, anyone like to speak for or against the change in the special use? All right, to the city council, you do have before you, if I can find that.
Just to clarify, I may kindly request a motion to amend that scripener's error from the 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
The times.
Yeah, but the mayor still have to call.
I'm looking for the ordinance. Okay, I would ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Who made it?
I did.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, second by Alderman Gazal for the approval of case number SU 25-1-3-1, the request of A and D storage seeking a B3 special use for a special service storage facility located southwest corner of Renwick Road and Boreo Drive in Crestille. Any questions or comments in regards to the motion?
The motion, the second, will be with the change.
With the change also.
Correct.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Bobby Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Jennifer Metten.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Rudy, you're all set to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next case is the proven ordinance mending the Crestille zoning ordinance, define permit and regulate government-operated outdoor firing ranges in the city of Crestille. But before we start with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Economic and Community Development Director also, Patrick Ainsworth, to give us some background information in regards to this case. Patrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, Ron gives his regards. He could not be here tonight with a family situation, so I will do my best to take over. Before you tonight, on the first agenda item for number seven is the tax amendment for the special use, various tax amendments for the outdoor firing range. As you saw in page one or page 122 of the packet, there was a meeting that was held on April 1st, I'm just going to read verbatim, please those in the audience don't have this, on Tuesday morning, April 1st, Lockport Fire Protection District Chief O'Connor contacted Police Chief Clark, Community and Economic Development Consultant Ron Metzner, Assistant Lockport Fire Chief Huff, and two Aldermen, Alderman Dyke and Kubal, to coordinate a meeting to further discuss questions and concerns the Aldermen raised at the prior evening's work session meeting. This group of individuals met at the Lockport Fire Protection District Headquarters at 1:00 PM in the afternoon to discuss how the questions and concerns that were raised at the staff and Plan Commission items related to, one, the days and hours in firing range that would be in operation, and, two, the size of the controlled, the proposed burn pit, and how citizen complaints and concerns regarding operations and shooting that this facility could be handled effectively once the facility is in operation. So as part of this packet, this again, as discussed at last week's meeting, there was two items to be made. One was the tax amendment itself, which is this item, and as part of this packet, Ron Metzner had put together the exhibits that were sent by Chief O'Connor and his team. For A, there is a new description of the burn pit, instead of it being 40 by 40, which was originally proposed, it's now eight feet by eight feet. And then they also talked about the restriction of the firing range operations. I do think it would be a great opportunity for the Chief O'Connor and his team to maybe talk about that a little bit more detail. And then the part of Exhibit B is the request for the committee. The full title of that was the Lockport Township Public Safety Training Facility Advisory Committee. There were some bylaws that were attached to Exhibit B, there was some discussion about that, how that would result from any concerns from residents, and how that would be, that group would meet, and then how that would be reported back to the city council. So I do encourage the Chief of Fire Protection District to come on up and maybe discuss that in a little bit more detail.
I would ask our Chief O'Connor, please step to the podium, any comments you would like to make in regards to this.
Good evening. Mayor Sullivan, city council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will be brief. Since we began this process nearly two years ago, our focus has been on improving the proficiency of our first responders through high-quality, realistic training opportunities. Improved proficiency in emergency response makes for a safer community, and it makes for safer men and women who respond to these calls. During this time, we've been very cognizant of the concerns of our residents and have made sincere effort to address every concern brought to our attention. Early in this process, we met privately with council members Gazal and Jefferson to discuss their concerns about the possibility of increased noise with an additional public safety range. We also discussed concerns about lead from bullets being in the ground. With this information, we went back to the drawing board and completely redesigned the training grounds. We spoke to experts and researched noise mitigation practices. We moved the range furthest away from the closest residential area and put our classroom building between the range and that subdivision to act as an additional physical barrier to noise. We made sure the range was shooting in the opposite direction of the subdivision, as the majority of the noise from gunfire follows the direction you are shooting. Instead of just a back berm like the state police and stateville ranges, we added berms on the side as well and increased the height of the berms to 24 feet. We learned that if you reflect the noise up instead of out, you significantly minimize the volume heard surrounding the range, as was demonstrated in the sound engineer's study. We added additional natural vegetation, including ground cover and trees, which will help absorb sound. We added a sound wall to the back of the range, which finishes the funnel directing noise up instead of out. Then we hired a sound engineer to complete a study on the design to prove that our sound mitigation efforts had an impact on the sound produced at the training facility. Those results were significant. To address concerns about lead contamination, the range will be designed in accordance with U.S. EPA best practice management practices for lead at outdoor ranges, as well as a joint memorandum between the Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA Waters of the United States. At last week's workshop, council members Dyke and Kubal mentioned specific concerns they had regarding the training facility. I listened, and the next morning drafted bylaws for the committee as described by council member Kubal. I also reached out to Deputy Chief Huff to see if we could further fine-tune the hours of operation for the range. I provided both documents to the city administration and the council members who raised the concern, asking to meet so we could reach an agreement. Ryan Metzger provided amendments to the committee bylaws on behalf of the city, all of which were accepted. The advisory committee provides a collaborative platform for community members, public safety leaders, and city staff to address concerns, share feedback, and enhance the operations of the training facility. One of the major benefits of this committee, one of the major benefits this committee provides is promoting open communication between a balanced representation of agencies and the public, which ensures transparency and accountability. I believe this was the goal of council member Kubal when he recommended the creation of this committee. The committee also supports the facility's mission through collaborative problem-solving and constructive feedback, ensuring it continues to meet the needs of public safety personnel while being sensitive to the concerns of our residents. Council member Dyke negotiated the newly proposed hours of operation, further limiting the usage. The total range operation has been reduced by 80%, and the night shoot operations has been reduced by 70%. Open dialogue between leadership from both Crestille, Lockport Police Departments, and city officials allowed us to get to the bare bones of what time is needed by all agencies for training and qualification. By the end of this meeting, all parties were satisfied with the language of both documents, and I think it represented an excellent example of intergovernmental cooperation. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, if it's appropriate.
Are there any questions of Chief O'Connor or of Patrick Ainsworth from City Council?
I do. At the last meeting, I had asked several questions that they were not answered, and as you stated, you set up a meeting the following day after the, we were here last Monday, and on Tuesday, you set up a meeting with Alderman Dyke, which he had a very legit concern, which all of us here, we had the same concern, so as the residents, and I'm speaking not only on my behalf, I'm speaking as well as we have the resident. What concerns me is that you had a meeting with Ward 1 and Ward 4, Ward 4, pretty much half the time, he's not here, and he suggested the advisory committee, which I think that's a great idea. It's too bad this committee was not created from the beginning, so we can be transparent and we can be working one-on-one with our resident. What I did was advertise it on social media, which is on Facebook, and as you were witness last week, we had a couple residents that they're not on Facebook. So shame on me for not knocking on doors a little bit earlier. It was a little bit too late. I did it under the rain. Last week before the meeting, I tried to do my best to reach out to as much resident that I could through social media groups, through knocking on doors, and unfortunately, not too many people opened the door, because it's election time, and as you know, our mayor was out there as well knocking on doors, but too bad, the residents were not informed of the gun range. They were informed to get a vote, you know, for him. But what disturbing is that you choose two elected officials that they're not in Ward 2, which both of us here were sitting, and we have more questions, and I know you need to talk to other elected officials to have means with them, which I'm thankful for their transparency, because they wanted to meet with you as a group. The question that I have is, is it because it's unbiased? Is it some form discrimination that you don't wanna talk to Ward 2, you did not invite them to that meeting? Or because you didn't like my questions, or my questions were very uncomfortable, and you were not able to answer them? An example, have you done an environmental study, and nobody answered my questions about that? And I do have a lot of questions beside that, and they were not answered.
So the question you have right now is, what?
I mean, the question is, is you picked two Aldermen that this doesn't affect them directly. I have a lot of questions under Planning Commission were not answered, and last Monday meeting as well, they were not answered.
So?
And is it, why are you picking and choosing who you wanna answer the questions for or not? Because they're not only my questions. I had here a list that I was reading last Monday from the resident, because if you recall, I'm elected by the people to represent the people of Ward 2, and as a whole as well.
Well, I'll answer your question. As I stated in my opening statement, the reason that I asked to meet with council member Dyke and Kubal is because they brought up specific questions, and I thought those are realistic situations that have not been brought to my attention before, any concerns, and I never thought of the advisory committee. That's the first I've ever heard of it, and I thought that's a pretty good answer. That's a pretty good suggestion. I think that's something that we could really do that would be positive for not only the community, the city, but the public safety agencies. Council member Dyke had brought up his concerns about some of the hours. I'm not an arson investigator or a police officer. I have had conversations with DC Huff about the needs of the police officers, and so I reached out to him, like, can we fine-tune this anymore? What do we really need to help accommodate the concerns of a council member and also still meet the needs of all our police agencies? So we sat down and really crunched the numbers. Is it as flexible as we would have liked? Nope. But it's a negotiation, and at the end of the day, we felt that we could get all our hours in for shooting mandated training, and council member Dyke was satisfied with the limitation, which is significant, of the range hours, and to mainly focus on the range opening at a time when people are either at work or at school. I mean, we have to have the hours sometimes, but it's not year-round, it's limited to 15 times a month, the hours are reduced. It's significant, as I think you guys have a copy in front of you. I'm not afraid of any questions. I'd be happy to meet, and I have asked to meet with you before, and I sent an email to-
We met, we both met with you.
Right, and I sent a follow-up email to meet with council member Darrell. I didn't get a response. I think I've been pretty transparent and open about having conversation with anyone who is willing to reach out to me. Quite frankly, there's not too many people that do. But I've never shied away from questions, and I haven't shied away from meetings. I encourage it. I think education is the key to moving this project forward, because I truly believe in the merits of this and the good this is gonna do in the community. And I think we have answered every question about sound in the community and our mitigation efforts, and I think we have proven that it's going to be quieter than the other two ranges. So the work that we have done with that, I feel very confident, I think the more people that are educated, the more people that will understand that, hey, this is not such a bad thing that we're thinking about. And not only that, it improves public safety in the community. So there's no bias, I'm not afraid of any questions. I still happy to meet with you. You let me know a time and a place, but it was specific to the concerns that each of these council members brought up, and they were willing to meet with me that day.
And I appreciate that Alderman Dyke take care of the hours for us, but also you have to understand that there's a lot of residents unhappy, there's a lot of residents, they have a lot of questions, they have concerns, they are afraid some of them, and I wish we could have done like a town hall meeting where we open it to the resident, where they can come and ask you questions one-on-one, instead of standing here as a forum and you bring everybody here to intimidate at the council. We have a couple residents said, you know what, I could not speak, the room was full with people. She sent an email here, actually, and is one of the packet. I reached out to you, and I gave you the, some of the petitions that we did, which they were really legit, they were really difficult actually to even to do those petitions, because we wanted to make sure that only eighteen-year-old that can do it. They needed their six days of their water bill, you know, to be entered, so it wasn't an easy petition. It's not like, okay, just sign here. No, they have to literally search for their, you know, water bill and enter their information because we want a legit, legit one. So, the fact that you wouldn't even touch it that night, some of the residents, they found salty because they care.
I think it was...
And I represent them, and I care with them, and this is going to affect us, no matter how you want to make it look so nice, you know? It's going to affect us. It's going to affect our property value. It's going to affect a lot of things for us, our daily living. It is going to affect us.
Okay, let me address a couple of things that you brought up. Number one, no offense to the poll that you did, but I stated I saw the poll. There's no context behind it. It's not worth, it's not worth the paper it's written on. If I would have put a poll out, who's for a public safety agency that improves your public safety at no cost, and that's all I provide, there's no context behind it. I'll have twenty thousand signatures saying, yes, of course I want better public safety. Without any context, it's really not worth anything, because people don't understand everything that's going on behind the scenes. Now, as far as transparency, this is the fifth time that I spoke in these council chambers about that. I had published everything. I published all our presentations on our website. My email address and cell phone number is out there for the public. If anyone has any questions outside of standing in front of this room, is intimidating in front of everyone, asking a question, I understand that. But I couldn't be more accessible, and I'm happy to talk about it in front of everyone. I don't know why anyone would feel there's any bit reason to be unsafe. This is going to improve public safety in this community, and we're taking steps that no one else is taking steps, not only just for sound, but for safety through the range master and policies and intergovernmental agreements, and it's going to be not open to the public. It's going to be trained professionals shooting at this range, people who know what they're doing. I don't, that's why I think the education is key, because there's no reason for people to feel afraid about anything in this range. As far as the value of homes in the community, this is a range that's going on state-filled property. It's a training facility, brand-new, with landscaping, a brand-new building. Aesthetically, it looks very nice on an area that's just an open field on state-filled grounds. This is, and on top of that, it's going to improve public safety and possibly lower your taxes. I'm like, if everyone heard all of that, I would be curious to see how many people that signed that petition may have a different feeling. So, I'm not against polls. I want to hear what people say, but let's have a conversation where there's education involved, and I think that's what's key here.
I don't disagree with you, but we failed when we posted on all the agenda items, a training facility. We failed as a city. We failed not to post as a gun range. We failed that the sign that we had on Runwick, it doesn't mention anything about gun range. It only say on Division, I'm sorry. It states training facility. I failed as an older woman, even though I was posting on social media. Like I said earlier, shame on me for not knocking on doors for the last couple of months. Shame on the city for not advertising it on social media, on their website, on their Facebook. Shame on us.
Can I ask...
The residents of Crest Hill deserve the opportunity to speak and to express how they feel about this gun range. And when you say lower taxes, can you please touch on that a little bit more?
I'm sorry?
When you stated that they, that will lower taxes, how would this will lower our taxes?
It's ISO rating. I mentioned that in my, I don't have my presentation in front of me, but ISO rating currently, every city municipality fire district is given an ISO number. Right now, the Lockport Fire District is two. You gain different ratings by training, water supply, response, response time, the number of vehicles going to certain calls, and it only rates you for fire response. It doesn't rate you for EMS. So, it's very involved. Part of the points for an ISO one rating, and you may see vehicles around different communities, ISO one, it's a big deal, people are very proud of it, is that you really cannot gain all the points for an ISO one rating without a training tower. We have done the calculations, and we know we're short X amount of points, and if we have those points for a training tower, we would be an ISO one community. What that means is that your businesses and your residents, their insurance company sees that you live in an ISO one community, and your insurance rates go down because you have a higher level fire protection department. So, this is all part of the bonuses of getting, I want ISO one. I want it bad, you know? Just to, just to say, hey, Lockport Fire is one of the best in the country, and I know we are, but until I buy a training tower, can't get it. It's impossible to capture those points. Every single community has an ISO one, has a training facility.
So, you're saying with the burn tower in this training facility, you guarantee an ISO one rating?
I, I'd be hesitant to guarantee anything, but I know we will capture all the points in today's scoring model to be ISO one, and that'll be a priority as soon as it's built.
And you did say that in all the presentations that you had before us.
I don't think there's any question, the advantage and the positive that the fire asked, the fire training facilities would bring to the community. The gun range, on the other hand, it's more than just the sound, but it's the location, its proximity to a subdivision, who when those folks put their life savings into their homes, there was no firing range within a quarter to a half mile from their homes. It's different than moving in when there's something already there, like a prison or the other firing ranges, or warehouses across the street that trucks may be coming in and creating noise. But when this comes in after the fact, those residents really deserve to be heard and represented from all the elected officials that are up here, who are elected to represent their residents. And it's not just the residents in immediate areas, we're the residents of the entire city, because this location is going to have an impact on the development of the rest of that area, when and if it hopefully becomes Crest Hill and development on Weber Road. I don't think a firing range is a very good marketing tool to encourage development in the future, and we all know that the city is landlocked. We need more rooftops, potentially that's an area that could be, it's adjacent to another residential area, and so, and more rooftops creates more business, retail, add revenue to the city. There's a long-term effect in the whole city besides right now. It's for the future of the city, and I don't think that location is the best place for it, and I'm not in favor of it as it stands right now, the firing range.
I appreciate your comments, and I'm hyper-focused on the future of our community. I had the opportunity to speak with a gentleman here, and I posed a question to him, and he didn't necessarily have the answer, but he did provide some insight. But I'll pose a question, if I may. If the concern is the sound, which I understand, and we have proven through the sound study and our mitigation efforts, that it is going to be less loud than the current two ranges that have no mitigation efforts that are owned by the state, and we're taking five agencies from louder, busier ranges and putting them at this range, those that affect the safety of Lockport Township, those specific agencies, and they're now shooting at a quieter range. Overall, this reduces the volume of gunfire from training from these public safety agencies. If it's a reduction, and this isn't just me saying it, these are, we paid a lot of money to train professionals who are experts in the field to do this study for us, and to be honest, I didn't know what, I was hopeful, but I didn't know what it was going to say. I didn't know anything about decimal levels, and so, with that in mind, I don't understand the pushback still if noise is truly the concern. So...
Can I add to that? Mark? Can I add, both of you to add? I brought up the same concern last week about the economic development and how Crest Hill is looking for the two hundred acre. I did talk to our consultant, remember I said it last week, I talked to a realtor for commercial, and, because it's one of my backgrounds, and I talked to our consultant, and he agreed. If we get the two hundred acre, it's going to be really hard, because the goal of the city is not just right now, it's long-term. We are, like the alderman said, we are landlocked. Alderman Jefferson requested that we need to do an economic...
Economic impact study.
Impact study. We are not home rule. Crest Hill's dream is to become home rule, because you talk about safety, I agree with every word that you said about safety. We all need safety, especially in this crazy world that we live in. But I think our chief will agree with me that one of the issues that we have here, and I see some residents there sitting, we have a major problem here with drug dealing and issues in Ward One, and the only way that our chief can do something about this because the laws that they have for that, we don't qualify for that, because we're not home rule. I'm thinking of long-term, I'm not just thinking of short-term. Can you agree or disagree with me that we talk about this, Mr. Chief?
Yes.
One of the issues that we have with all the rentals, correct?
It is an issue, yes.
Okay. And so, I hope you understand where I'm coming from. I love that you guys went above and beyond to do the studies and to do all those things, but I want you to put yourself on this side of the table for a change. It's not easy. We're not only responsible with the resident, we're responsible with the city as well. We're responsible for our police, we're responsible for everything that happens in here.
So, I'm not too familiar with the land you're talking about. It's state-owned?
It's about to where you are going to be.
And where are they building? The new Stateville and the men's and women's prison?
That's further down.
Further down, so that's...
Yeah, we're talking Weber, talking Weber and Division.
If you guys finish, I can kind of pick up on that. How are you doing, Chief? I...
Doing great, thank you.
I reached out to a friend of mine who's an architect, and he does a lot of commercial buildings, and they're actually in Illinois now, looking at restructuring a government building, and I had him come out. He came out and we drove around, and he actually, he actually commended you guys, because I sent him the packet to look at, and he said, well, the fact that they took it from west to east, it's facing more road than residence, it's facing more of an industrial complex the farther south it goes. He says, that's commendable. He says, but you need to check to see how far underground they're going to put it. If they put it below ground level and the berms and the sound barriers up there, he said that would reduce the sound to almost nothing. He says if it's going to be on level ground, he says some people may hear some pings, not no pops, pings. We also drove further down by Stateville and State of Illinois. Those gun ranges, we have more of a concern of, because there's nothing there to block sound.
They're pointing directly towards your subdivision, too.
Right, and so I asked him, how far would the sound travel if it went back the other way? Because we had a lady in here say she hit a gunfire, and he looked at the foliage over there, and he looked at the space, he say, unless they got hearing like an animal, they're not going to hear it. He said, but what you need, what you guys actually need is an economic impact study. He said, no one can know the plus or the minus in property value, what's going to affect going next door unless something like that happens. And he says, if, he says, then in your packet, I don't see anybody addressing it. I see an EPA study, but not a economic impact study.
So, we have had conversations about that, and that's, unfortunately, Ron Metzger's not here. Ron's been in the business for a very long time, and he had no issue recommending waiving the economic impact study. He says, as a matter of fact, a training facility like that would actually probably improve property values for that area. So, I didn't think anything of it then, and I think it's going to be a very nice facility. If we're basing on the hypothetical of getting two hundred acres or whatever, I hope you do, but from personal standpoint of dealing with the state, you have to, you have to move mountains in order to get thirteen acres. But that's not my, that's not my profession. I just know the process that we went through. I think getting two hundred acres would probably be a lot more difficult, but especially when the state has plans on building or expanding Stateville Prison. I appreciate you taking time to, and gentlemen that you're with, taking a look at our facility, and like I said, I'm a fire chief, I'm not a sound expert, that's why we hired one, and I truly care about the concerns of, they're my community, they're my residents, they're people that we take care of, and I know they're yours too, but we're just as vested in the concerns that they have, and we took that matter seriously, trying to address every issue with safety and sound and EPA, all for the goal of improving public safety in the community. I'm thinking to myself, how is this a loser? This is a win for everybody. On top of that, you talk about, mentioned, you know, some of the issues in Crest Hill as far as crime that you're hoping home rule would alleviate. We know, every single person in the back of that room, we respond to Crest Hill. I worked many years at Station Two. We work hand-in-hand together, and it is dangerous out there, and it's not getting better, unfortunately. This training facility would help the city of Crest Hill, they help their police department. I'm guessing like we, Crest Hill Police Department is a revolving door of new fire render, new policemen coming in that need training, that have very minimal experience. They go to the academy, they come back, they have nothing. A training facility like this for our police agencies would really be one of a kind and would improve public safety, not just in the city of Crest Hill, but all of Lockport Township. We put a lot of time and effort, and my door is still open, anyone wants to talk to me about it, but I appreciate your concerns of what you're trying to do. I truly think it'll, it'll be a gem of Division Street, that's for sure, but I think, I think it's definitely a benefit to the community, and the pros farly outweigh the cons in this project.
Okay, and also, I would like to say that the two hundred acre that Claudia mentioned, he did say that you'll never put residences next door to a fire range. He said, you can, you may as well mark that area as industrial. He said, that's the only thing it'll be fit for. He said, who's going to, who will in their right mind want to live next to three open-door gun ranges? So, I can say that if that two hundred acres ever come to fruition, which I really doubt personally, but if it ever does, it'll definitely be an industrial area. The impact on the value of the community housing, that's more of my issue, because
Bless you.
I think, bless you, if we waive the economic impact study and people lose property value, then economic impact study would have given people an opportunity to sell if they chose to leave, prior to the building going up and the gun range going in. Without that study, people left guessing, and that will negatively impact them if the property values do lessen. I think it's an important ingredient, and I don't think we should waive it, because those residents... because those residents, some may want to sell, some may want to stay in spite of, but I think they need to get an honest and fair assessment of their value. You know, we, we know the county is not gonna assess their property any less because the counties in the business are making money off of property, they're not in the business of helping you sell it, so. And, and I, I think we should be able to do that, at least for those people in Ward Two that have concerns and Ward One that have concerns and, I mean, and the whole city of Crest Hill because he said that impact study, it impacts the entire city, not just the war, it impacts the entire city.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask if Patrick.
Yeah.
Or Mike or Tony, if you couldn't shed any more light in regards to this impact study?
Yeah, just to clarify, page 100 of the zoning ordinance refers to the two PUD exceptions that they're asking for. So when we get a PUD and we have studies requested, and obviously there's case by case basis. Number seven, which is the first exemption, is a tax and school impact. I'll read this quickly. "A study indicating the sources and amount of revenue to be generated to various government jurisdictions as a result of the development, expected school aged children generation and estimated cost of providing service to the development that would be absorbed by the city." This is a government institution, there's no students generated, so that one was waived. The next one is a market analysis, and there's an A, a B, and a C section. A refers to residential uses, B refers to commercial uses, and C refers to industrial uses. We do not have a market analysis requirement in our zoning code for institutional uses. They're requesting a special use for institutional use, a government use. So I was in that conversation back in February with Ron when referring to the waiver for a market analysis because our zoning code does not cover that, just to clarify.
So, so they're not seeking a waiver of an economic impact? I don't know where that phrase came from. It's a market analysis, which is what the PUD section of the zoning code requires as part of the PUD process. Of course, that can be waived, which is why they've asked to waive it because, again, in those conversations with Ron, both the tax and school impact, which is number seven, and the market analysis did not seem to fit for this type of use. So there is no requirement in the PUD for an, either a economic impact fee or real estate property value examination. That's not what's required and that's not what they're requesting to be waived. I understand that that's what you're suggesting, but that's not part of the waiver, that's the only clarification.
Wouldn't that come up in the market analysis, wouldn't it tell you about property values?
Again, the market analysis is, are your uses residential, commercial, or industrial? Not an institutional or governmental use. Our code does not address a market analysis for a government use as opposed to commercial, industrial, or residential. I mean, this is certainly not a residential, I don't know that it's commercial or industrial. I think that's what Ron determined when he was making this analysis back, when he was making his staff report.
Are you speaking of the 200 acre, because I'm kinda.
No.
Why are you speaking out?
I'm talking about their request to waive the market analysis, which is required under your code. And they're requesting to waive the tax and school impact. Those are the two waivers, two of the waivers that they're requesting are that they do not have to comply with those two sections of the PUD portion of the code because staff determined that it did not apply or that did not fit and they were willing to recommend to the plan commission that those be waived, and now that is what is part of what is being recommended to you from the plan commission is that you waive those two portions of the PUD along with the final construction drawings. That's the third waiver they're requesting.
Okay, are there any other questions from council before I open it up for?
I think lastly, I'd just like to say that market analysis study would be very misleading based on the fact that within the city limits of Crest Hill, we have vacant land and vacant land does not give you a city of a very good market analysis view. So I, I understand the ask of that waiver, but that, that would still be misleading based on the fact we still have farmland in the middle of city Crest Hill. We have vacant land that's in unincorporated city limits of Crest Hill that can skew a market analysis, but I think along Division Street with the state, the state police on one side, Department of Corrections on the other side, and then we're gonna put in the fire training facility. I, I think the market value from that point up to Weber Street would be a, a very analysis we need to have based on, we're trying to figure out if in my lifetime that 200 acre become available, what will go there? And how, how will we, you know, market it to attract someone to buy it? I, I don't know, I couldn't be in favor of the waiver of the market analysis even though it's gonna be screwed the heck because that will, it does impact the entire city and we still have corn growing around the city, so.
I have one more comment for you, Mr. O'Connell. Do you remember when we first met at your office?
Yes.
Was about a year ago. And I promised you back then, because as soon we find out about this, a lot of us were against it, a lot of us in here. Remember, I promised you that we're not, we were going, and I think our attorney will remember that we were going to pass an ordinance to block the gun range, like any firing arm in here. Remember, I promised you that I will not do that. Do you recall that? I kept my promise. Because I feel there is always room for negotiation. There's always room to grow, there's always room to talk about things.
I, I agree as well, and I think you could appreciate the fact that we kept that same opinion on trying to coordinate and find common ground. And that's why the point of my opening statement is, from the very beginning, we didn't find out what people liked or didn't like until we started having these conversations. And these, these five times that I spoke, I learned something new every single time and through conversation. And we made changes every single time until we got to this final product. The product we would have built initially is completely different than the product we have right now.
I understand, may I just add? So with that said, since you said you care about the city and you care about the resident, and so as we, and since your gun range is not gonna be into like a different stage, why can't we put the garnish on a pause for a couple of months? And we can open this to the committee and work with the committee, so this way we all look like we are transparent, we're all trying to work with our committee, and just like I give you my word, I'm asking you as a favor that we'll do some meetings with our residents and we'll communicate more with them.
All due respect, we've been at this for two years.
But not with the residents.
And?
Not with us, with us was a year ago. You were with the mayor in private meetings and that was a different story, but with us.
Wasn't a private meeting, it was a meeting with the city administration.
Administration and department heads, which we never knew about it until later on.
I can't speak to that or what communication was there, but I know in our process, we have done and have exhausted every means to make this range quieter. If there was something more that I thought would make it quieter, I would have done it already. We're to this process and everything has been hauled up because of, you know, how this has, has to expand, and maybe part of it's on me because I've never done this process before and there's a lot of moving parts as I'm sure city staff will can speak to. I, I'm to the point where we're satisfied with, with the plan that we have. Now this committee that we formed, I, I think there's, I think there's room for communication and, and open dialogue with that and certainly to work through any problems. But I honestly believe that once that's built, people are gonna realize it's not as loud as people thought it was gonna be. And it's gonna be something that the community can be proud of.
That committee should have been done a year ago or a couple of months ago to be transparent and to sit with our residents and give them the opportunity to share their ideas, their opinions, their feelings, and how they feel about it. Now you've created committee advisory afterwards, what's, what's gonna change with that? You already set the hours, so what are they gonna complain about? The noise, are you gonna do something about it, are you gonna like stop the gun range? You're not gonna be able to stop the garage, the gun range. As soon as it's built, it's been built. You know, if you wanna be, if you wanna be people, you know, if you wanna work with, with the residents, which I don't think is too much to ask, you know, if we can like extend this couple of weeks so we can have some meetings with our residents, they deserve that.
It's been almost two years, this process.
Again, to you, not to us.
I'm sorry. There's been five meetings, they're all open meetings. People have had availability to speak or reach out to me. I've worked with anyone who's been willing to talk to me. I think we've exhausted every avenue of how to improve this facility at this point. I don't think any further communication is going to do anything as far as with what we have presented to the range. We've exhausted the times on the range, we've exhausted everything that we could possibly do to make it quieter and address those needs. I don't have six, eight million dollars to make an indoor range, and six or eight million dollars for an indoor range wouldn't do anything about the long gun qualifications. Wouldn't do anything about the noise at the other ranges. I think this is, this is the best we can do at this point, and I'm asking the city council for a vote.
My only comment?
Yes, sir.
In this whole process, and we did follow our own process to get to this point, as I stated last week. You, you mentioned about things that you did. I will say that you and your staff met with our staff many times over the last 18 months. I have been told by our staff that you, and I stayed out of those meetings. I was told that you and your staff have gone above and beyond the requirements that we asked for for what you did, for everything to get us to this point, not only in regards to the training facility, but to the firing range. You went above and beyond what you needed to do, especially with the firing range, to mitigate the noise less than what we ever expected it could be. So I want to thank you for that. And with that being said, I don't believe we have any more questions from city council.
I have.
I do.
I asked if anybody had any and nobody was.
We're still talking.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Scott?
Okay, yeah, thank you. First of all, we've done a lot of talking over this time, residents. I don't know, I know Claudia feels that they weren't given a much of a voice. I know it's been out there, it's been in the paper. Whether some people finally waited till last minute or whatever. I want to say that the meeting that we had on Monday, I was approached Monday night, I was asked if I'd be able to talk with them. I had figured a phone call because he asked if, you know, I could call him on the phone. I said, "Well, you can call me if you want." He called me the next morning, asked if I could attend a meeting at one o'clock at their facility. I said, "Sure, I'd be glad to take and meet with you." He also asked Alderman Kubal, who I want to thank and commend for coming up with the idea of the advisory committee. No one else before that has mentioned advisory committee where residents get to speak out, be a part of the process in going forward with this project. I think that's important, I want to thank you, Joe, for that idea. I think it's very good, I think it gives people a voice and an opinion. I also have a couple of other things I want to ask and mention, and I thought of after our meeting. And I didn't want to call you because I made sure the next day I got a hold of Tony, didn't I not get a hold of you the next day? And I asked him to let the rest of council know what transpired, how there was a meeting, who attended, so that was transparent. So there was no, nothing behind closed doors or not being transparent or trying to hide something under the table. It was not done. I made sure the very next day, I called him first thing in the morning, he was busy, I don't know if he was in a meeting or whatever, but we talked right after lunch and I told him, "You need to get this out for the council to know and everybody else to know that we met and discussed some of these things." Now, I asked him if he could put that information in there, he didn't have all the information, but he assured me that between Ron Metzner and our police chief, that council would get what was discussed that night, what we kinda agreed on and tried to work on that, that day, that afternoon. So council would be informed of that. I feel a lot of what we, you know, talked about that day was, you know, a lot of give and take. I think everybody, you know, came with a lot of different ideas on Joe, you know, feels the same way. And I hope council, you know, if they want to, you know, talk about some of the changes that were made or have any more suggestions, I think that would be good. But I also had another thing I was wondering. I had talked to the chief, I gave him a call during the week, and he had mentioned to me about a possible monthly calendar to let the residents know. And I don't know if Lockport would be open to that too, you know, it could be mailed, it could be picked up at the fire station over there at your training facility or whatever. I also was wondering, are you gonna have a message board out in front of your facility there?
An electronic one?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Well, I hope that that can be done, I want, I want to make sure that that's out there and that when you do shoot and you do have practice, it's on that message board. So when the residents go to work one morning, they see, "Okay, tomorrow, there's gonna be
Yeah.
use there." I think that would be very helpful for the residents to know that, that ahead of time, okay, they're gonna be using the range at this day, at this time, for two hours or whatever it may be, what the entity is there that's gonna be shooting there. I think that's very important, not only for the community, but for those residents that live there. Another thing I was wondering about.
Do you mind if I address that specifically? I had conversations with DC Huff and he said they normally do schedule them in advance. There's very rarely any impromptu shoots. So I think that calendar is something, if at the very least, shared with the city or put on our website and as an active calendar, so people can go to the website, hey, if you're curious about that. I haven't got approval for my board for, from my board for a message board, so I can't promise that. I think ideally that would be something that would be very beneficial. We put one in at Station Two and we have one at Station One. They're excellent. So that will be my goal. I can't make any promises, though I got approval from my bosses, but that's something that I think can be very easily done. And there may also be Crest Hill, our sign code might have to be addressed as well. I mean, I know we have some limitations on the electronic scrolling boards, but.
Right, okay, but I just want to make sure, I just want to have residents where they're informed and they know. And then the last thing I have, I was wondering about, is, you know, once the range is open, we have the advisory committee for people to discuss and bring concerns or when you have the meetings, you know, because we don't know right now and afterwards, hopefully everything goes as planned and the sound is mitigated with what you're doing. But I was wondering, is there any way to have some money set aside for in the future that if there was any additional mitigation needed to absorb some sound, that there would be money set aside for that possibly? So once it is open and if there is some concerns, something like that could be addressed?
That would be something I'd be willing to talk to my board about for sure.
I would appreciate that, I think that would help also, because this way, if after it's built, if there is some sound, if there's some way you get the engineers back in or say, "Hey, this is what we're experiencing. Is there a resolve to this? Can this be done? What do we need to do?" And I think that would also help also.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, but the other thing was the burn ord, our burn ordinance, and we don't allow, you know, some of the burning, you know, like as I mentioned to you about pallets. I know you brought the size down, and I know our residents can't burn pallets or anything big. And we have a recreational pit, and I know your fire department, and I'm sure you're gonna have the people out there and the equipment to make sure nothing happens with that burning. But I also would want you to know that our ordinance states, if it becomes obnoxious, if the smoke's going toward the residential area, residents call, you would have to put that out. Just so you understand that part of our ordinance. Because if someone's burning and neighbors call, the chief knows that they have to go out. out there and tell them to put it out. Am I not correct, chief?
Correct.
So I just want you to know that also. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Jennifer?
As a twenty-year resident of Crest Hill in Ward One, I guess we're just more used to the noise of gunfire from the other two ranges. The other night I was sitting out having one of those very controlled burns in my backyard and just enjoying the evening, hoping it was a little warmer than forty, but it wasn't. And you could hear the little pops in the distance, and, you know, when I first moved out here, I remember asking my husband constantly, what was that noise? What was that noise? And I don't remember when I stopped hearing them, but I know that it wasn't that long after living here. And it became something that you don't notice, you don't hear, because it's part of the background noise and you know that it's coming from a state range. So I do not doubt anyone's history of trauma. As a registered nurse, I understand that trauma-informed care is very important, and we do try to make concessions for people who have those histories, whether in the healthcare facility or during a, you know, any kind of interaction between our police or our firemen and those that we interact with in the community. We try to be sensitive about those things, but as they've explained, there are huge requirements for them to help keep us safe. And we need to be able to provide them a space to do this. And I am grateful that we have this in our backyard because we know that we're turning out the best and the brightest. We're giving them opportunities to make our communities more safe, and I'm for this facility with all of its aspects.
Anything else, Claudia?
No, I don't.
Tina?
I had a question, back to the ISO rating?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned in lowering, is it lowering the score?
Yes.
That a burn tower would bring?
Yes.
To that effect? The gun range wouldn't have any effect on ISO scoring, would it?
ISO is strictly for
Just for fire.
Response, yeah.
Okay. So there again, I'm, I'm in favor of the fire aspect for that, that reason among others. One other one, it's a question, I guess, for, for our city attorney. Is it, it's ILCS 130 slash five, are you familiar with that? It pertains to firing firearm ranges?
Again, we discussed it last week.
So the one thousand yard, at least one thousand yards does not apply to, in this situation, to a permanent dwelling or adjacent property?
What we talked about last week was the immunity, looking at what you're talking about, where the thousand yards.
Does an owner and operator of a firearm range place in operation after January first, nineteen ninety-four, is immune from any criminal liability, et cetera, et cetera? If the firing firearm range conforms to any one of the following requirements?
I'm not so certain that this is the most current version of the statute that I've been given here, but.
So it'd be immune from liability and one of those qualifications requirements is the firearm range is operated by a governmental entity?
Correct.
Which this would be the case here?
Yes, we talked about last week that once a firearm range that is a governmental range is in use, it cannot be sued by a citizen or the city for a public or private nuisance for sound problems, and they would be exempt and immune from the requirements of our noise ordinance, and that's our nuisance noise ordinance.
They would be immune to that. They wouldn't have to follow that.
Correct.
But one of the, one of the concerns that would fall into this advisory group that was, that was created was to address concerns with noise, and if it was determined to be excessive during hours that weren't, that, that created an issue, you, you wouldn't have to abide by them as a governmental agency.
Well, we couldn't cite them, but I think the idea behind the, and again, I wasn't at the meeting, I wasn't with Alderman Kubal and Alderman Dyke, but, and I'll let them speak to it, but I think the, the purpose behind that is to be good neighbors, and while we cannot cite them and say, you must do this, that, or the other thing, or you must change the hours, the idea is that in the spirit of governmental cooperation, you would get cooperation and that there would be collaboration, and they would do voluntarily maybe what we can't force them to do, but again, that's the, the whole notion behind government collaboration.
So pinky promise?
That's your word, councilman.
The concerns I also have is fifteen lanes in the firing range. We've been told that probably won't be more than four or five at a time. Then why build, why have fifteen? And I'd like this through the police chief.
You bet. So like anything else, you build to maximum capacity. The maximum number of shooters we have on the range a few times a year is up to fifteen. That's for our night shoots because we have to get them done in a short period of time because our timeframe is down to four hours instead of eight. So our maximum capacity is fifteen.
So it could be.
That's why we would build it out to that.
So they're, you're planning on fifteen shooters at one time?
It will usually be fifteen shooters at one time.
Okay, just so we're clear on that.
I would like to address your one concern with regards to the state legislation. This is a police and fire department, this isn't a, open to the public. We have earned trust of the community based on our actions over many, many years. We gave our word to the two council members in the meeting that this would be cooperation, just as Mike stated, and we'll follow through with open dialogue and education and do whatever we can to address the concerns. I can give you that as a guarantee.
Nate, any questions?
No. Oh, I thought Tina, oh, Tina.
No, I, I'm saying.
I, I guess just a few comments that I have then. I, I just appreciate all of the residents that have reached out over the last, you know, several weeks, actually for the last eighteen months. All of the input was, was very much taken seriously, not just, you know, from the people in the neighborhood that it directly impacts, but citywide. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing from some of the, some of the folks tonight. I think that everything that the chief and the fire department has done, like I mentioned in the work session last week, to, to really listen to our concerns and, and make adjustments, I think this will really set precedent for, hopefully, like I mentioned last week, with improvements to the other gun ranges. I mean, like everybody has mentioned, I've lived in the city my entire life, I've heard these noises my entire life. Yeah, we get a little bit used to it, but it's still, you know, alarming at times. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing everything you possibly can to make this as quiet as possible with, with the cost, the budget that you have. So for that aspect, I, I support it as it is and really look forward to the success of all of our first responders.
Thank you.
Joe?
I'm going to steal Nate's comment from last week because he didn't say it again. Alderman Albert over here. What better thing, this first responder safety training center, what better thing can we put in a maximum security prison land? I don't think anybody can come up with anything better than this. And, and of course, you know, the sound is a concern. Chief O'Connell has already addressed it, but I'm just going to say simply, what's in my head with this is all the first responders that are out there shooting, they're outside shooting today. They're outside shooting today at the state police center, which is louder than this center's going to be. Okay? These aren't new people shooting, they're same people that are shooting at the state police right now are going to be shooting here, and it's quieter. That's the only thing that I have to say. And of course, Chief O'Connell will put this advisory board together and, and those folks will monitor everything that we've said here tonight and, and make sure that that's what's happening. If something needs to be adjusted, I know the chief is going to try to do that. I can tell by the way he talks, he's very sincere. So those are my only comments.
Okay, thanks, Darrell. Anything?
Chief O'Connell, before I make my, ask my last request, I just want to say that everything we asked you to do, you've done. I want to be on, on record for that because you guys, we act for the burns, you put them in. We act for the wall, you put it in. I wish you could take it about three feet down. That would really help a lot, but at this point, it is what it is. I just want to be on record and assure that the committee will consist of residents and Lockport Fire and Police. It's not a, you know, those that are directly affected by it are probably the ones that can give you the best feedback for it. You know, me sitting on the committee, I'm just there because I'm Ward Two. I'm not there because the gunfire is going to affect me where I live. So I, I, I want to just make sure that, other than our economic development person, that the residents of, that's directly affected by it and the Lockport Fire and Police form this committee so that the input could be direct and honest with one another, the dialogue can be very open and honest.
As, as is defined in the bylaws, the city council will pick two residents of their choice, the fire district pick two residents of their choice, myself, Representative Cresthill Police, Representative Lockport Police, and then city administration. I think that encompasses everyone. That's, that's the formation, the committee, it's pretty equally represented, I, I think, for members of the community. So, and they could be two of your choosing, whoever, whoever you like. I've already let this gentleman know that he's, he's got my vote, so he seems passionate about it. I still think I could sway him, but.
I would say that the resident should be any two members of Ward Two that's directly affected by what's going in.
There wouldn't be a specific HOA member from Long Meadow subdivision, Longview subdivision. I believe that's yours, so it's defined. I don't have it in front of me.
Well, are you done, Darrell? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, one of the letters that were provided to us from a resident, he said that he doesn't like that the Cresthill City Administrator will be selecting somebody, and he doesn't like that the police chief will be selecting somebody because they directly report to the mayor and feel they'll be unduly influenced by that. So I don't know if that's going to have any bearing with you, but I think as much as we can remove it from influence as possible is a good thing. And like I said prior, you know, I did twenty years in real estate, and I do understand property values going down, and I understand you've done everything you think you could do outside of an indoor range for the sound mitigation. But the, the part about the values of people's homes, that breaks my heart because I know if they're affected, there's nothing they can do. As, as I said before, when I bought the home I'm currently in in Cresthill, and I've lived in both sides of Cresthill, I grew up by Ladis and now I live off Thirty. So I've experienced life at both sides of Cresthill. When I bought the current home I'm in from a Cresthill Police Sergeant, it was directly behind a bar. Now, I knew when I bought that home, there was a bar there, and I knew what goes with the bar. So anytime there's any liveliness over there, I just suck it up because I bought that house and that bar was there. And I, I look at it as, you know, if somebody calls to me as an older person complains, I will relay the message, but I personally have never once complained. And, you know, there's been a lot of times, I'm sure, I could have, but I didn't. So in this particular case, the one thing I have a problem with is what's stated before is, yeah, those other places were there when people built their house, bought their house, whatever, but this one wasn't. And when it negatively affects their value, that is sad because it's something people have worked very hard for. Now, nobody has a crystal ball, and nobody can predict that, just like nobody can predict what fifteen guns firing at once is actually going to truly sound like, because we don't know, and nobody in this room can tell me that. That's, that's another one that's going to be what it is, depending on the day, depending on this. So I, I like, Claudia, wish we would have done the whole group thing prior to this. I wish that our city leaders would have been transparent with us from day one, so we would have had more opportunity to be aware of this. Unfortunately, we can't go back in time. It's just sad that that continues to be a problem of transparency. But I, I just, I, I think there's so many issues here that it, it, they're unknown. So, you know, everybody has their opinions, and the vote will be what the vote is, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks, John. Appreciate it. All right, I would like to open it up for anybody that would like to make a comment in regards for or against. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Sean?
I apologize, I'm reading from a computer, I had printer issues tonight. I've sit here a couple of times speaking to the planning commission and then last week to this council, and have stated what I think are sound reasons for wanting to learn more. Chief O'Connell said tonight, every time he talks with people, he learns more, and the same is true for me. I'm going to read a portion of the email that I sent to all of the aldermen today, not for their benefit, but for the benefit of the first responders and their families in the room, because I think they deserve to hear what I think is a sound point of view that I don't think has been stressed enough. And so if you will bear with me, I'm going to just read portions of this email. This has been a hot topic of discussion for a while. I've stood here and talked about it, as have countless other residents. Residents of the fields of Long Meadow and Arbor Glen subdivisions, who are, as we know, the families and residents of our city that are most directly affected by the planned facilities. I'm imploring the council to vote no on the ordinance amendment as it is written today. Let me share with you what I think this does and does not mean. A no vote is not turning our backs to or standing against our first responders. A no vote is not being unresponsive or ignorant to the training needs of our fire and police. A no vote is not saying that we don't want classrooms, maintenance facilities, training grounds, a burn tower, first responders memorial, or state-of-the-art facilities built for our men and women who serve. In fact, a no vote is simply to the ordinance today as it stands. A no vote is saying that we have more conversation to be had. A no vote is simply saying not yet, not while the majority of the residents are still against gun range, not while options that haven't been exhausted yet are still in play, such as state, such, hold my calls, Alderman, please.
Sorry.
We did that little laugh. Come on, admit it.
I put it on silence, I don't know what's wrong with it.
I do it all the time. A, a no vote is saying not yet while options that haven't been exhausted are still in play, such as state or federal funding or further, yes, further noise mitigation measures that will benefit the residents. A no vote is only regarding the gun range, as I see it. It can be a yes vote to approve moving forward with all of the other things that are wonderful and needed for our firemen and women and EMTs. I'm saddened that it's presented as an all or nothing deal. I've been transparent with Chief O'Connell about that. I've engaged him in dialogue, he has been gracious and professional, and we have committed to continue dialogue no matter what. But I don't think it is all or nothing. And I'm saddened and disheartened when supporters come forward and think that we're against them. We are not. We are for safety. We are for state-of-the-art facilities. We are for training and improvement. I'm optimistic that we can continue conversation and meet in the middle somewhere while we continue dialogue with each other. This is the most controversial and pivotal issue before the council that I can recall in twenty-one years living here. I hope that you show that you are hearing the residents. Think of tonight as not yet. Let's continue talking and working. I've already committed to continue the conversation, and I hope others will join me. We can find a solution. and I hope others will join me. We can find a solution. Let's get started on the parts that we can agree on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean? Sean?
Yeah.
I hope you're on the advisory committee also.
I will sign up.
Thank you.
No matter what happens today, I'm committed to continue the conversation. I think there should be two members of Fields of Long Meadow and two members of Arbor Glen. I know that we can't have a committee of 25 people, but I think the more representatives of the city at large that we have, the better.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Rhonda Kessagrande, and I am a 32-year resident of the city of Crestill. I reside in the Old Chaney neighborhood, which is Ward One. I am currently a fire commissioner, and in May, I will be sworn in as a newly-elected fire district trustee. I want to express my full support for the development of the training center that will serve our first responders and the greater community. As a commissioner, I have had the honor and responsibility of hiring many of our young members of this department. They are the next generation of firefighters. These young men and women are stepping into one of the most demanding and vital roles in public service. They need a place where they can train, grow, and prepare to protect our community with confidence and skill. A dedicated training center is not just a facility. It's an investment in the safety for the readiness of our first responders. It ensures our personnel are equipped with the most current techniques, giving them the tools to respond quickly and effectively, whether it's a fire, EMS call, or a natural disaster. As a trustee, I also see the long-term value this center brings, not just for our district, but for all the city of Crestill. A well-trained department makes for a safer community, and this facility will raise the standard of emergency preparedness across the board. I respectfully ask for your support. Let's build something that will strengthen our community for years to come, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and honored guests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Michelle Hollinger, and I'm the fire chief of Country Club Hills, small bedroom community in the South suburbs. I also have the privilege of being a faculty member at Prairie State College in the Chicago Heights with the Fire Academy program and the EMT Basic Program. Up until January, I served as the combined agency training chief, which is overseeing training for up to 12 different fire departments in Mavis 24. I share this background with you not for self-promotion, but to emphasize my deep commitment to training in the public safety sector. I see daily the passions, dedications, and tireless efforts our first responders put into their work. Firefighters and police officers are driven by a singular purpose: to protect lives and save property, to run towards danger when everyone else is running out. But what often goes unseen is the preparation that supports that bravery, the hours, the days, and years of training that allow them to perform under extreme pressure. This brings me to the topic at hand, the need for your public safety training facility. The purpose of training is profound. It's safety and efficiency, the safety of every firefighter, police officer, and emergency medical responder on the job, and the efficiency of their ability to respond to crisis situations, and ultimately, the safety of your residents, your businesses, and the visitors in your community. Currently, Country Club Hills has a small 21-square-foot training tower. While it has served us well for many years, it's simply not large enough, nor equipped enough to meet the training needs of our department or the surrounding agencies. Despite that, we've been able to offer quality training opportunities that have been programs hosted by Louisiana State University, New Mexico Tech, and other large institutions. These trainings have included local police officers, SWAT team members, firefighters, Illinois State Police, county sheriffs, K-9 teams, as well as drone teams. Some of these sessions that have been offered have been able to include elected officials and community members so that they can see firsthand the importance of the public safety training. Many of these classes have been provided on grant funding that has included our residents of Country Club Hills and neighboring communities such as South Holland, Hazelcrest, Dalton, just to name a few. We were able to offer Run, Hide, Fight, given to us through Louisiana State University, specifically for our residents and our educators. We have been able to provide bleeding control classes for our residents and our educators, and enhanced CPR classes. Opportunities that a state-of-the-art facility such as yours are endless. Here's the reality. A small training facility like Country Club Hills limits what we can do. We're Lockport Fire Protection District has plans for a comprehensive facility designed to support all public agencies: fire, law enforcement, emergency medical service, and emergency management personnel. Excuse me. This facility would provide opportunities for immersive, hands-on training that cannot be replicated in a classroom. As you know, firefighting is one of the most dangerous and unpredictable professions, and there are no substitutes for live-fire exercises, realistic search-and-rescue scenarios, full-scale simulations of structural fires, hazardous materials incidents, and mass casualty events. These are high-risk, low-frequency events, and the only way to prepare for them is through realistic training in a controlled environment. The same is true for law enforcement. A state-of-the-art facility will allow departments to sharpen emergency response skills under real-world conditions. It enhances coordination and communication within organizations and with other first responders, such as law enforcement and EMS. This facility would ensure firefighters could stay compliant with evolving safety standards, including those set forth by the National Fire Protection Association, also known as NFPA. It will help Lockport Fire Department to recruit and retain top-tier firefighters who are drawn to departments that invest in the safety, professional development, and state-of-the-art facilities. In addition, this facility would provide cross-training opportunities with other regional and state agencies, promote cooperation and shared preparedness across various public safety sectors. The benefits are very clear. A comprehensive, multi-use facility will help improve readiness for all types of emergencies. But it's important to remember this facility isn't just about firefighting. It's about public safety in the broadest of all senses. This would be a hub for disaster readiness, strengthening many municipalities' ability to respond to extreme weather events, mass casualties, industrial risks, and infrastructure strain. This would be an investment in the safety of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical responders. But more importantly, it is an investment into the safety of every resident, every neighborhood, and every business in this community. The decision you make today will echo in future emergencies, whether we're prepared for them or not. We don't have the luxury of kicking the can and kicking the can, waiting until a disaster happens to begin this type of training. We need to be prepared for when we're called to action. As a firefighter, as a fire chief, and the wife of a Lockport firefighter, I can say without hesitation that the safety of all of our first responders, my husband, his colleagues, and all the men and women in the public safety sectors should never be compromised. Training is a vital part of that safety, and it should never be seen as something secondary or optional. In closing, I urge you to support the approval of this training facility. It is an investment in the lives of those who risk everything to keep us safe. Now, I did not add this part that I want to address because I wasn't fully aware of everything that was going on, but I would like to say, we are a burn facility, so I would say predominantly, we do a lot of the live burn training. However, based off of where we are regionally, we identified that there was definitely a lot of need for police training. We opened our doors. Like I said, we have multiple police agencies. We don't have a firing range, but we do allow simunitions, which, as a police, I'm not a police officer, but I understand simunitions are louder than like a bermed type of engineered sound barrier. Obviously, residents, you know, they have a fear of the unknown. They don't know what they're going to hear, what they're going to see. Aldermen, to kind of piggyback off what you were saying, is getting the message out, that was huge for us. So, we would use code RED or reverse 911. We would call them, hey, we have, you know, Illinois State Police coming. They'll be training. So, it was important for us to get that out there. We put it on social media. We have signs that we put out, you know, drill training today. And we actually are located on 175th Street on the north side. The only thing that separates us from the subdivision is 175th Street. I'm happy to say that the residents embrace the training, and it was very important for us to hear their concerns, which it sounds to me is being done, and for them to actually just take a calculated risk and say, okay, we trust that this is going to be the right thing. I can go down 175th Street, knock on any door, and the residents say they appreciate it. They see it. They've seen the value in it. They've seen all these other agencies come and utilize this. And so, at the time that we were building this, that wasn't the intention. But it's also provided us with opportunities to work with our police department for rescue task force and just a lot of those other types of things that we normally wouldn't get the opportunity. So, I guess in closing, what I would like to say is, you know, fully understanding now that you are more or less supportive of the burn part of the training facility, I would also urge you to be receptive to the stopgaps that Chief O'Connor has put into place with some professional engineers, sound engineers, because I think that when you have one, you have the other. Police and fire need to work together. So, with that being said, I thank you very much for your time, and I wish you the best in making this decision.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else?
Mayor, council, good evening. My name is John Matthews. I live at 1932 Civil Drive in Crestill for the past 31 years. I'm a proud retired Lockport Fire District Lieutenant Paramedic and have the privilege of serving this city and fire district for over 30 years. My wife Jackie and I have three sons that graduated from Richland Grade School and Lockport Township High. All three boys are firefighter paramedics that serve their respective communities. My youngest son Douglas is a firefighter paramedic with the Lockport Township Fire District since August of 2021. This is why I speak in favor of the new training center. Let me tell you what I have learned in almost 40 years in the fire service. Training is the most vital and important work a firefighter paramedic does, other than responding to alarms and emergency medical calls. Training equips the firefighter with the knowledge and skills to mitigate all types of emergencies and minimizing the risk of injury or death. Training lets the firefighter master his equipment, whether deploying a hose line for extinguishing a fire, or cutting a person out of a vehicle using the jaws of life. Training develops the probationary firefighter into a veteran firefighter through years on the job, with the skills he will retain as he goes through his career. Training is an ongoing process with regular drills and exercises designed to maintain and enhance their skills, ensuring the firefighters remain proficient and at the top of their game. Training keeps the firefighter up to date on the latest procedures and innovations. Innovation is crucial to the continuing success of any organization. Let me repeat that. Innovation is crucial to the continuing success of any organization. I know this facility will be, there will be some inconveniences, but what would you rather have? A highly-trained and proficient fire and police department willing to put it all on the line for the citizens of Crestill, Lockport, and the surrounding area, or not? I believe that the Lockport Township Fire Department is one of the best-trained fire departments in the state of Illinois. I also believe that with this new training facility, it could be even better. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Frank Blasky. I've resided at 1857 Springside Drive here in Crestill for the last 25 years, where I've raised my wife and three children. I'm also a recent retiree of the Lockport Fire District, where I retired as the deputy chief of operations, serving there for the last 30-plus years. As has been very well expressed here this evening, I also understand the importance of a well-quality, versatile training facility. I can speak to the fact that the Lockport Fire District has had a training facility and looked to have that necessity as part of the fire district, and they've been looking to make that a reality for probably well over half of my career. I've seen great efforts put forth by both agencies diligently trying to address all concerns specific to the gun range, through sound studies, adjusting the hours of the range usage, modifications to the berms that exceed current standards, just to name a few, along with several others that I've just heard about this evening from Chief O'Connor. I feel that such a consolidated, state-of-the-art facility where both fire and police from this area can come together for so many of the necessary aspects of training would not only be a great asset to the agencies involved, but also a facility that Crestill can be proud to say they have within their city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? Last call.
All right. Greetings, everyone. My name is George Pritchard. I've been a resident of Crestill since roughly September 2003. Had our house built on Coventry Lane. We've been living there ever since, me and my wife. We spoke, you stopped by, you know, during the election season and all that, and then we spoke on the range and things of that nature. We were getting some information on that. Having said that, I was previously employed Department of Corrections roughly almost 30 years, worked at Stateville Correctional Officer, counselor, and a pro agent. So, again, as the gentleman was speaking too, I'm more so inclined to, we're not, we don't have any issues against, of course, against a law enforcement, anything like that, none of that certain. And I'm more inclined to agree with Mr. Sipidi regarding, I like the fire aspects about it and the training in general. I'm still questionable, as you were talking about, Mr. Jeff, you were speaking about the sound. I'm sure it probably will be quieter than the range, the state police's range, I'm sure it is. Having said that, perspective to me, Stateville, the state police range is much further than this will be. This is going to be in pretty close proximity to where I live. So, obviously, it's going to be quieter, but it's going to be interesting to me to see how that's going to be in perspective. It's just going to be quieter. Well, if, you know, it's quieter than that one, but since it's closer to you now, it's a little louder, probably. So, I'm not too keen on that. Also, as far as the financial implications on our homes, like I said, in the future going forward, it's going to be interesting to see how that's going to impact everyone. Like I said, there's a lot of speculation on possibilities of income or tax incentives and all that. To me, it's a lot of speculation. So, it would be nice to me to do a little, like I said, a little more further in-depth indications of finding out whatever it may be, as Ms. Gazzola was speaking about. You alluded to, Mr. Sipidi, you alluded to the statute regarding that, you know, if there's a nuisance issue, that basically, well, they'll have immunity to it. So, whether or not, whether or not we will get some buy-in from the police, or, you know, I should say, Lockport Department, or after, if it's built, which at this point, it seems like everybody's saying yes, or at least not everyone, enough people are saying yes, it seems to be, you know. So, if it is decided that you are all going to go forward with that, to me, whether or not all of a sudden, they're going to come up with more money. If we say, hey, it's a little loud, it's a little loud, they don't have to come up with more money. So, I mean, are they going to just dig in their pockets and just say, hey, look, here we go, we'll do it anyway? Our kindness is in our heart. Now, maybe they will, maybe they won't, maybe I'm just making assumptions on, you know, that, you know, I'm sure everyone has goodwill and... and all that, but goodwill is still not going to be money, and goodwill is also still not going to be, this, the place where that's at is not in everyone's specific residence area. So, personally, like I said, I'm with the training and all that. I always like training. I think that's a good and great thing. Obviously, at this point, their training, and I believe you said, right now, they're at the state police further down. It's, you said something to the fact that they need, you know, they want a bigger place and do more training, and it was kind of getting crowded and things of that nature. Obviously, they have to train every year. That's still going to occur. So, even if it's delayed to find out more things, or whatever it may be, they're still going to get training as far as qualifications to shoot. So, it would be interesting, or it would be nice to me if we would go forward with doing that route for right now, instead of just going and saying, yeah, we're just going to do it, and constituents, hey, you guys, you know, hey, hopefully, it's not too loud, and if it is, well, we're sorry. You know, so that's how I'm kind, you know, kind of getting it. You know, not to be disrespectful to anyone, but that's just kind of how it feels. But, appreciate, like I said, all, everything everyone's been doing. Appreciate everything you've done. All the studies sound like everyone has been doing a lot towards it. But, all of the constituent, I'm sure, are still, you know how people are with elections, people tune in and they tune out. They don't really, they're not aware of everything. So, I hope, like I said, if it goes forward and everything like that, I hope it actually is quiet. Because I don't want to, the one that's state down the road, to me, that, I really don't hear that too much. That's not a bother. Like I said, I just find it difficult to believe that the proximity of this one, that all of a sudden, I'm going to be like, oh, it sounds just like it's that far away. I find it difficult to believe that. But, thank you all for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, George. Okay, the last call.
I'm a resident, 1837 North Berry Circle Drive. I read in our Crest Hill residents all about this. I'm very much for the fire department training center, but I don't agree with the firing range. I think if I was coming into Crest Hill, I'd be amazed by all the people and how friendly they are. On the other hand, I'm sorry, I wouldn't buy a house within a gun range area. I just wouldn't. And my house is everything I own, everything, every penny. I've been here 32 years. I love it here. And I speak to my friends, my family, how much I love this city. But, I just think at this point, people have to stand up and say how they feel about things. And no, if it's going to take $5 from my house, that I can't sell my house when I have to retire, if I can't get the money because I'm living next door to a gun range, I don't think I'd get it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even buy a house next door. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Maury. Sir, you're the last one.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Valley. I live in, I live at Newbury Court. There's going to be a gun range in my backyard, and I'm not too crazy about that. I'm all for safety and training and all that stuff. Those are all valuable things. But, the bottom line is, there's a gun range in my backyard. And I don't want a gun range in my backyard. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, John. Okay. So, gone through the process here. We have some recommendations before us. So, I am going to ask for a motion to approve an ordinance demanding the Crest Hill zoning ordinance to define, permit, and regulate government-operated outdoor firing ranges. Anything else I need to add to that, Mr. Attorney?
No, that's the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Well, there's a motion to table. That was first, and a second.
I read the motion to approve.
What's that?
I read the motion to approve an ordinance, just as it stated in Agenda Item Number 7.
And I can table it.
And before that motion was agreed and seconded, was there a second on that?
There was a motion to table it, and a second to table it.
But, there has not been a motion and a second on the approval?
There was a motion to approve it.
I'll second the approval, if that's what...
You can't do that.
You can't do that. You can't...
So, there's a motion to table. It's time to debate the motion to table. So, everybody can discuss the motion to table that has now been seconded. So, now is your opportunity. Everyone speak up on why or why this should not be tabled. Then, there will be a vote on the table.
I will say why, because I still have a lot of questions. A lot of my questions, they have not been answered. They were answered to certain elected official. We, as a representative of War II and other elected officials, we deserve the same opportunity to sit with the fire chief and with the police of Lockport Chief, and with our chief and our economic development, and whoever would like to join the party. I'm here to represent the residents. We deserve another opportunity to say how we feel, to answer the question that they're still pending, and we're not saying no to the training facility. I appreciate everybody that stood up here and spoke. Everybody has a right for their opinion, their time for how they feel. But, I deserve that opportunity. The chief stood there and said, it's not unbiased. So, I have the same right as the rest elected official that were given the opportunity to sit and speak with them. I spent lent hours on this, just like everyone else. Our residents deserve this opportunity to do a meeting, so we can discuss things. And, like Sean said, we're not saying no to our fire department or police department. We're not saying no. We're saying, let's work together. We improve a lot, and there's more room to improve with this facility. And I'm asking the rest of the council to grant this opportunity because it's only fair for everyone. What's another couple of weeks? The gun range is not going to be built overnight. He said it's going to be stage three or four.
I like to say, did, excuse me, am I correct with the market analysis is what they are asking to be waived? Or, was it granted?
The market analysis is what is asked, they are asking to be waived. That is not the current ordinance that has been motioned to be tabled. The current ordinance that is motioned to be tabled is the text amendment, which would change the code to define, permit, and regulate government-operated outdoor firing ranges. That's the first ordinance that is currently the subject of the motion to table. The waiver of the market analysis of the PUD ordinance is the second ordinance that will be after this one.
Okay. I think we got to do a market analysis. I think the residents deserve that. You know, I mean, if the inevitable is there to be, the residents deserve the opportunity to make a decision within their family health over whether or not they want to stay or sell. And that's what's driving me to table this motion.
Can the council yield to the audience for a question?
No, this is for us right now. Anybody else from council? Questions, comments? All right, we have a motion to table. Roll call, Chris.
Jennifer Mathen.
No.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazol.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes, I would like to see more discussion. And as Alderman Jefferson said, this is just to give residents and more of an opportunity to have a voice. And also, I agree with Alderman Jefferson on the, on the market analysis, the economic impact. I would like that to be done. So, I'm a yes to table.
Nate Elbert.
No.
Joel Kubal.
No.
Scott Dyke.
I know talking with the meeting I had, and I know the fire chief mentioned that anybody could have contacted him, am I not correct, chief? And had a meeting with him. I know I was asked, and I'm sorry that others weren't asked, but I feel that if there was an open door, it should have been taken the opportunity to use it, to go forward, to have more conversation. And unfortunately, if it wasn't done. But, I think they've showed good faith with us. And I trust the fire and police department with my life, and I trust them that they will work continually going forward with this community. So, I say to table no.
Scott, I asked the same questions as you last Monday, and I was not given the opportunity to answer them. So, you believe your questions are more important than us?
I didn't say my questions are more important.
I'm just saying that.
Mayor, lead your vote.
Mayor votes no to table. Okay, so we do have a, that one failed. We do have a motion by Alderman Mathen, seconded by Alderman Kubal, to approve an ordinance demanding Crest Hill zoning ordinance to define, permit, and regulate government-operated outdoor firing ranges. Questions or comments?
I do have a question, and I think this is to be directed at the city attorney. I've been provided with, off the mayor's website, where it says he's on a commission, that, a merit commission, that he's paid $18,000 a year, where he, according to this, pursuant to recognize merit, is a public employment certification for employment promotion, and upon, yada, 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 it goes on. Does that constitute a conflict of interest when he's being paid to serve to make raises and appointments and stuff for law enforcement, and he's in a position like this?
This is the first I've heard of that.
Well, he had it on his website, and I'll be happy to provide you with a printed copy of that.
If you're asking me for my, like, off-the-cuff opinion, it sounds to me like this is, again, not a direct legal conflict, as is his membership in the Fire Foundation. It is not a legal or legal conflict, or any kind of a, an impediment to voting. But, again, he's got to vote his conscience if he thinks it is. That's an ethical and moral obligation that he has every time he takes a vote. This is the Will County Merit Commission?
This is the Will County Sheriff's Department Merit Commission. I was asked by Sheriff Kelly to serve as a member of the, member of the board approximately four years ago. I do not make $18,000. It comes out to about $2,000 a year.
And again, this does not have anything to do with any direct...
This is, this is, would be very similar to our civil service board, where we create the list of correctional officers. We create the list for promotions within the road deputies. We do the interviews...
Sheriff's Department and Sheriff's Correctional Officers.
And then it goes to the sheriff and his upper administration staff to pick and choose who gets invited to...
No relation to fire.
No what?
No relationship to fire.
No.
The fire district, or any fire district.
This is strictly the Will County Sheriff's Office.
Then again, I don't think that's a legal conflict.
Does it have any relationship to any police department, their promotion process or hiring process?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I think it doesn't have any connection to any police department and their hiring
The Will County Sheriff's. Within the road deputies, the road deputies get promoted to sergeant, to lieutenant. That goes through the merit commission. Then, it gets passed off to Sheriff Kelly, and his administration, they pick and choose who they wish.
And it sounds to me like this is a recommending body. You don't have any final say-so?
I would believe that's correct.
What do you mean, you would believe? You serve on it.
Well, nobody's ever asked me that question before.
I mean, do you, is it have anything to do with anybody who's employed by the city, whose city, are any of them, are there direct descendants involved in who you pick and choose and who you nominate?
Go ahead and name it.
I'm not going to name anybody publicly. I will not do that. I'm asking you a question. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Would that be constituted a conflict?
For a firing range that involves departments that he is not involved in?
I'm just asking the question. It was on his document, not mine.
Again, my best opinion that I can give you, as I sit here tonight, having just learned of this, is as with the Fire Foundation, it is not a legal conflict.
Okay.
Even though he gets paid, as she said?
Yes, even though he gets paid.
Interesting.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table, correct, to approve? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
No.
Claudia Gazol.
No.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Marcus Sepiti.
No.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joel Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Mathen.
Yes.
Mary Solin.
I think that both this training facility and the gun range is going to be a tremendous benefit to the city of Crest Hill. I think that our police officers and our firefighters, men and women of the fire department, and men and women of the police department are very well-trained. We have a golden opportunity here as a city to make that training process even better. I stated last week, if I am in need of the police department, or the fire department, or if a resident is in need of a police officer, or the fire department, I hope that they have the best training possible in every aspect of firefighting and police work, to come to my house or to your house. And we have a golden opportunity in this city here to work with our surrounding communities when it comes to police and to fire training, and to give them the opportunity. I don't know who came up here and said about the younger group that's now both within our police departments and our fire departments. I agree with that. We need to train them the most training that we can give them to make them the best that they could be in tough situations that most of us in this room are afraid to be in. So, the mayor votes yes for both this training facility... for this training facility and the gun range. And I agree with Alderman Dyke. I have confidence and trust in our fire department chief and our police department chief. And if there's an issue going forward with noise, I will bet my life that together, between the advisory board, both the police and the fire departments, we'll get it accomplished. If the noise is mitigated, if that's the problem, I can bet my life that they will do everything in their power to rectify that situation. If the burn center causes noise or smoke pollution, I can bet my life the fire chief will do everything in his power to mitigate that cause. So, I do trust our fire department. I do trust our police department. And I've been accused that I've been, I was a police officer for five years, and I've been accused, I shouldn't vote for this matter because of that also, just to let everyone know. But, you know what? That was back in 1980 to '85. We didn't have the training that you have today. We didn't have the opportunity that you have today. When I was a police officer, we shot at District Five 40-some years ago. It pretty much looks exactly the same today. That's the scary part. I agree with Alderman Elbert. I wish we could pick up the phone, call the governor's office, and say, hey, look what's being built here, state-of-the-art. We want you to build berms, sound barriers, and everything else. state-of-the-art. We want you to build berms, sound barriers, and everything else to mitigate noise for all the residents. Because when we lived on Clement Street, we heard the gunshots. We heard the banging of the boxcars with sledgehammers at Railroad Salvage. We now live for the last three years in Caroline Lakes, we hear the gunshots in Caroline Lakes. So, I would hope, I would hope it would be that easy for us to call the Governor's Office, call our representatives, and say, make them do this. But that's not the way it works, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry. It doesn't work that way. It will take years to try and get them to do something. And I hope someday that will happen, because that is an outdated facility.
Well, Mayor, you did a, you did a great job.
Wait a minute, I'm not done yet.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. You stopped, so.
I had a drink.
Okay.
Let me say this too also. District Five State Police Headquarters is outdated. I don't even think it's being used right now. There's a plan to build a new crime lab facility just to the west of District Five State Police. And that, and they're going to attach, they want to attach a new District Five Police Headquarters on the backside of that, of that crime lab. It's the same crime lab that's on the east side of Joliet that's been there for fifty-plus years. We could have a state-of-the-art District Five. We could have a state-of-the-art crime lab also. And if everything holds true with Stateville Penitentiary, we could have a female bed capacity of twelve hundred and a men's new prison of fifteen hundred, along with the RNC Center. It could all come together between that and the training facility for the Fire Department and the Police on Stateville property. And if everything does work out, the two hundred acres that was promised to us back when Representative Hassert and Senator Wilhelmie worked on that, back in the nineteen, early two thousands, that we were supposed to reap the benefits of the sale of that two hundred acres. But through things that happened in Springfield and things that happened here, kind of get discombobulated at times. And now we're, now we're at the point of we have to fight for that two hundred acres once again. But we will continue to fight as we have been fighting since they announced that they were going to close the penitentiary and rebuild a new one. So, hopefully we can have some development there. And we can have some businesses and we can have some homes. That's all. Now you can say anything you'd like.
Okay. Um, I just want to, now that the vote has been taken, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Homan mentioned and many others up here, is that this is, a no vote was not a no vote against any entity. The, we have the utmost respect for the Fire and Police. We recognize the jobs that they do, putting their lives on the line every day. And we all appreciate that. But we, as elected officials, have to look at everything involved. And when we have residents, they're voicing concerns, we have to take note because we are their voice up here as well. But I just wanted to know, Mayor, since you covered thanking and recognizing all of our first responders, which we all agree with a hundred percent. I would just, but you mentioned no comment, and I would just like to know, what would you like to say to the residents that are very concerned about this gun range? How do you address their concerns? You, you never once addressed that big portion of this discussion tonight. I want to give you that opportunity.
Sure. To our residents, this was a tough issue. This was a no-win issue for anybody sitting up here tonight, because there's going to be a group of people that agree and there's going to be a group of people that disagree. And that's great. That's the process. I will say the same thing to our residents. I heard your concerns. I read the emails that were sent the last couple of weeks. I read them. I would, I would say to them the same thing that I made comments during the earlier speech. I trust our Fire Department and I trust our Police Department, that if there is an issue, they will mitigate it, whether it's the gun range or it's the burn center. And we will work with them. We, we, I, I think you're trying to make this like we turned our backs on the residents. I don't think that's the case. I think there are a lot of people that are in favor of the gun range and the burn, uh, facility throughout the entire city. And there's probably a good group of people that are against it. I, I think that we have the opportunity here to work with the people that maybe have problems or issues with the, with what has happened, but we can work with them going forward, and that's going to be a big part of the Advisory Committee also.
Can I touch on that quickly? Uh, you, you said that the resident approved it. Of course, Caroline's going to approve it because it's not in their backyard. And let me remind you that you lost in ten precinct, all your precinct beside Caroline, so the resident, they don't want you, basically. So, those people, excuse me, have respect. I'm speaking.
No respect.
Okay? So, ten, ten, the... Really?
Yes.
Oh, good for you.
All right, all right, let her speak. Let her speak, and I will respond, please.
Respect. The point is, you said you care for the resident. No, you don't. Because if this was behind Caroline, you would have done anything in your power, just like what you did with the trucking back there. You did whatever you can to lower everything and to, to benefit them. But when it came to Ward Two, and you have all these residents here that are going to affect their property value, you don't care. Because you had many people sitting here last week. You didn't address one of them. There was a kid here sitting here for many hours, and he addressed you, and you didn't even thank him. So, don't tell me you care about the resident.
I don't even think I'm going to respond to that.
You don't have to respond. I don't want you to respond. I was just making a comment and I didn't ask you a question.
We do have another agenda item, Mike. We do have another agenda item number eight.
There's another older woman that wants to speak.
Can I make my comment, please?
Go ahead.
Um, the implication that I resent is, is like Alderman, um, said, that we don't support fire and law. And the comments that you make seem to reinforce that with people, and I, I'm very, very angered by that. Because as I stated at the last meeting, throughout my time, even before I sat on this council, I supported that Police Department, and the chief knows that. The chief knows. Every Christmas, who baked you guys cookies out of the kindness of her heart? Not because I had nothing to do with my time, because I wanted to support my police. A hundred and twenty-two dozen cookies brought to you, right. I didn't do that to, to win an election. I wasn't even on the council then. And then once I became on the council, I've done time and time again anything I could to help our Police Department. So, the implication that anybody who had a problem with this and wanted more time doesn't support police and/or fire is a lie. I support them both, and I appreciate them both. And when I thought I was dying and having a heart attack in Lockport, police took me to the hospital. I thank God they were there. Even though it wasn't a heart attack, I still thank God they were there, and they reassured me that it wasn't a heart attack on the way to the hospital. So, I appreciate them very much, and I want to do whatever I can to make life better for them. But just the fact that we have a problem with something, and like I said before, no committee, no commission, no anything is going to adjust property value laws. It was an issue we had. It seems to be dismissed by everybody, but it is an issue. So, I don't, I don't like the implication that because we wanted more time to discuss this, or we weren't really keen on that part of it, that we don't support fire and/or police. That is a lie. This was, and, and you say, you have a tough choice. Well, this is, I, I, when I spoke with Representative Natalie about this, I said, this is Sophie's Choice for me. This is Sophie's Choice because I have my residents who are opposing it, who have issues with that, and then I have the aspect of the best training. So, it really truly was. And if anybody's never seen that movie, then just Google it. Sophie's Choice. So, it's not easy, and it's not just a flippant thing that, well, I support everybody and I support, I support the citizens. I support the Police Department. I support the Fire Department. I'm a very positive person, and I don't like the implication that I'm anything else.
Okay, Mike, we still do have, uh, agenda item number eight.
Motion carries five to three, ordinance number twenty fifteen.
Thank you. Twenty fifteen?
Can I make one last comment?
Five to four. Five, three.
Oh, five, four.
What was the ordinance number?
Twenty fifteen.
Okay. So, yes, that is the first part of what the Fire District has asked for. So, the tax amendment has now been passed. That amends the code to define and outline what a governmental, uh, outdoor firing range in the city of Crest Hill can be, and it permits it as a special use. The next ordinance is for the waivers that have already been discussed, certain PUD exceptions, and then the two special uses. One is a special use under the PUD ordinance for the operation of the training facility, and secondarily, a special use that is now allowed by virtue of the passage of ordinance twenty fifteen, a accessory use of an outdoor governmental firing range, uh, as an accessory use to the training facility.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance granting special use permits for non-residential planned unit development and indoor institutional use and an accessory outdoor firing range governmental training purposes, waiving certain planned unit development submittal requirements and approving certain planned unit development exceptions. To our city attorney, do I need to add anything else?
I believe that's it. I believe that this ordinance includes the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee and the bylaws as an exhibit and the modified gun range hours as previously discussed.
So move as presented.
Second.
Okay, on the question.
We have a motion by Alderman Elbert, seconded by Alderwoman Mathvin.
On the question, um, the bylaws for the citizens and stuff, I, I've been looking through my packet, and I don't see those. Were those included in today's agenda?
It's page one eighty-eight of the PDF under item eight. If it helps, it has the logo of the Lockport Township Fire Protection District, as well as the Lockport Police District logos on there.
Okay, um, before we take a vote on this, can I have five minutes to review this? Because this is the first time I've ever seen it.
Mayor, are we truly taking a five, full five minutes here?
I'll give them a couple of minutes. That's it.
And this has nothing to do with the market, market analysis that will be coming up later?
No, this ordinance is to, uh, accept the Plan Commission recommendation to waive the requirement of a tax and school impact study and the market analysis and the final construction drawings, uh, in the PUD ordinance. Those three waivers are part of this ordinance, along with the PUD exceptions, which allows a reduced amount of masonry on one of the facades, signage, metal roof, uh, use of containers for the burn tower and training classrooms. Did I miss? And then the two special uses that have already been outlined.
My, my concern is about the citizens being on the Advisory Committee and specifically what Alderman Dyke asked about as far as the set aside for, um, if there is an issue still with noise, that it could be addressed and concern, the concerns be addressed and, uh, remedied quickly. And I think, uh, Chief O'Connor, you said you would take that back to your board?
You're talking about funding.
Right. Set aside funding for the, the dress fat.
So, this question was just posed tonight, and I'm sure it was just a recent idea. Uh, but when we're talking about funding, I got to get approval from my board and City Lock Board. I'm sure they have to do the same thing. But I can assure you, we'll make every effort to mitigate whatever problem that comes up with this committee. And I think it's pretty well-rounded as far as representation. Um, so, but that's all I can promise at this time. I don't have the authority to talk about guaranteed funding any more than what's approved by, by my bosses, so.
All right. And I, and I just want to say, the, the vote has already been taken, and the decision has been made to move forward with this ordinance. And, um, I don't have any concern about who thinks what I support or don't support, or who I don't, because that doesn't matter to me. I don't know you to support you. You don't know me to know if I don't support you. I support fire departments everywhere, especially where I live. I support police everywhere because I have several family members that are in police departments throughout this state. So, my vote is, as a representative of Ward Two, is simply that. It's a business decision, and I want to make sure they get the best benefit of this decision. And that's all I'm concerned about. My personal feelings have nothing to do with this, and I don't have anything personal with you or anyone else. You know, I just think there could be more diversity, but that's my personal opinion. And I, uh, I, I just want to let you know, I'm going to be, try to be the best neighbor I can be, since it's taken. Because I live in the ward that's directly impacted. I have issues with people that live west of Webber Road saying they hearing it, and live over in Lockport saying they're hearing it, because I know traffic going down Webber Road mitigates noise, as well as that big area from the bridge on hundred, on fifty-three going over to State Street. So, I do have issues with people saying that. But everything else, the vote has been taken, and I'll be the best neighbor I can be.
Thank you.
The vote has been taken, so there's still...
We still have to take the roll call, right.
I mean, the ordinance. I'm not talking about this because, uh...
This is the second part.
Yes, this is the second ordinance.
This is the second part. Roll call, please, Chris.
Drell Jefferson.
No.
Claudia Zoll.
No.
Tina Oberlin.
Um, this is the other part, so I don't have a problem with those, yes.
Mark Sapity.
No.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Mathvin.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance twenty sixteen.
Okay, that is it for these two agenda items. We do need to go back to the top of the agenda. We still have the rest of the meeting to go through tonight. So, to everybody who was here, whether you agreed or disagreed with what happened tonight, thank you for your cooperation. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for respect to the people that spoke, both at the podium and at this table. I think that, uh, we have come a long way from this process that started eighteen months ago. I look forward to the fruition of it, and I look forward to a great relationship, a better relationship than what we currently have between our Police Department and our Fire Department and our surrounding communities that will be using the gun range and the fire facility to promote training for everybody. So, you're more than welcome to stay. You're more than welcome to leave if you would like. But we are going to take just a little bit of a break here to let the room clear, and then we are going to go back to our meeting agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
The community development update was from Director Patrick Ainsworth. He's going over that, the one item that probably be of high interest is going to be the solar array for the facility for the Hendricks Building. This is the five acres. It's for their facility. So they'll be our first solar array of that caliber. And then we have the Rus- the corner of Rusway and Weber Road. You're going to see a new construction of a sixteen thousand square foot building. Community Development's interviewing a new candidate for full-time building inspector. Conditional offer will be created and will be sent off. They'll have to go through his background and reference checks. And then the Community Development Department of Finance have been working together in reference to finishing off the FY twenty-four annual tip reports. There will be a charlie view board meeting, which is scheduled for April twenty-ninth. Stateville, we have not heard anything new from them. The BL Duke, the invoice has been prepared. It's getting sent off to the CEO and CFO. We also have a request for them to notify us regards to their insurance company. Job announcements. Basically, the building inspector, when this came out, the interview went through and everything seems good there for the building inspector. City administrative search, you all have the updates. Tomorrow, we got an executive session to meet with the recruiter. Ryan Cotton will go over the recruitment profile. You've all received electronic notebook on that. And that starts at seven PM tomorrow night. One of the things to start thinking about, since we got a little transition, possibly this is going to go through for another elected official to be sworn in on May, May fifth with Councilwoman Metford. Her last meeting will be then, and the new alderman will be involved. So I would recommend to put an invite out to the future aldermen if we do get interviews between now and May fifth. But that's going to be something you could discuss tomorrow. Water meter replacement. We're got sixty-eight meters left to be changed, changed out. It's going one at a time. We are going to be bringing the request to add a fee into the water billing, probably in May, to where if we got a manual read or recharge in the homeowners for that manual read, which will be an extra fee. It'll be in the best interest for homeowners to get those appointments set up for us to get in there and change out their meters. Place for reading texts. We're working on the final documents. The attorney has given us a list of things he needs to file the civil complaint. He gave permission to move forward on businesses that are non-compliant. Hopefully, we'll be able to get within the next two weeks, be able to get the complaint filed, and we'll see what we can do with, take them to, take them to court. Sanitary surf project. Everything's still going smooth there in the West Plant. Everything looks still to be on schedule. We'll be until, we'll see how this, how this summer, if they're able to have any problems, we'll find out. The heavy rains we've had recently have slowed, slowed things down, but that's put into their schedule. The TW training, as a certified flagger training, you got all this information last time. What Julius has recommended in the interim is he would like to send out a Public Works newsletter, which I'll be talking tomorrow with the staff. Let people know in our community about our employees that are getting trained and certifications. So I'm going to be bringing that up to the other department heads tomorrow, too, to look at a quarterly newsletter to talk about our employees, how good a job they're doing and what training they're receiving. So you'll be, should have a sample for you to look at maybe by, by the next meeting. The crime lab. The one thing that's, is positive, they did file for their, called the Section 401 Water Quality Certification under the Clean Water Act. So that's on the website for the EPA. There's a time period for people to comment on that, that permit. Think about talking to them. They're anticipating, once that, that comment period is finished, that'll be one of the last permits that they need. They are looking to move forward this summer with, you know, do at least groundwork, if not get the building started. Website, that we have about nine different employees that are working from all the departments in regards to Civic Plus, which is our vendor that provides us our website. So the team meetings have been going. Has everything, more feedback, more information, what's the redesign process look like? So probably about the next two months, we'll have some samples of what the templates are going to look like. And then that's where the city council, we could have a little bit of a survey and see which ones are we going in the right direction and what you want the website to look at. We're also learning about how we could do the redesign, which they do provide a tutorial. So keep it fresh. And all of a sudden, Pity brought that up about, we got a lot of old videos and things like that. It'd be nice to be able to adapt to the website need instead of having our videos that are four years, five, six years old, so it could be fresher. So you'll be getting feedback, we'll ask for your feedback probably in a couple of months once we get some templates on the website. Any questions?
How are we doing on the search for licenses for water and wastewater?
We've had two employees take tests. So we're working with current employees. We have a couple of options that we're exploring. Will be bringing you some updates of those options at the next work session.
At the next work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tony, you do have an agenda item here that you didn't bring up, the proven extension to MGT.
Oh, that's, yeah. If there's any other questions?
Well, I'd like to, how, how, those other options, what do they consist of and what type of areas? I mean, are you looking statewide or interstate?
No, we're, we're not searching without the other option. We have to look at, to see what options we have available to be able, trying to meet the timeframe of when our license, licensee's going to retire. To be able to get that done, putting together the search for a wastewater operator and a Class A water operator, those are not readily available, so.
Are we Class A or B here?
Well, you get Class A would be what we'd like to have.
I know, but aren't we Class B?
You can get a Class B, Class C.
But Crest Hill is a Class B city, am I correct?
I don't believe so.
Yes.
Yes. So that.
Even with, coming up with Lake Michigan?
That's Class C through Lake Michigan.
Okay, Lake Michigan is the other way. Got mixed up.
Probably a B.
That's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I said. Okay. Glad I know.
So again, my question is, since, since the date is fast approaching for the retirement, are we just going to put ourselves in a jar and search for a person, or are we going to put ourselves in a pool and search for a person?
Well, we'll give you some more updates next Monday. We're looking at every option we can right now.
I had a, a comment. I guess, Tony, maybe it would go to code enforcement, but can we reach out to the property owner of the Hillcrest Shopping Center regarding all the dumping that's taking place behind the stores? I just drove back there the other day, and I, I'm not just talking, you know, pop bottles and, and garbage bags. I mean, there's piles of tires, furniture, several mattresses. Can, can we just?
Yep.
Reach out to them, you know, residents have to maintain their property and they should have to do the thing.
So let's see what's got to say.
Don.
Don. Oh, Don Seaman.
Oh, Don.
We cannot hear you from there, Don.
Behind Hillcrest, where the, where the parking lot ends, and then there's grass, and then there's another road there. That's actually Nikor's property, so we'd have sent a letter to Nikor, but that, all that on the other side there is, is in Nikor's property. That's.
Okay. Well.
Whoever's property it is, that we're contacting and.
Yes.
I don't know what kind of teeth we have with Nikor to actually enforce anything.
Well, I think.
Can they be, can they be subject to tickets?
I, I think you need to try to get their, they have a community liaison, municipality liaison person, that's who you need to get a hold of, and usually they are pretty responsive once you get somebody's attention. But yes, we can, we can certainly, if it's their property, we can certainly cite them, and they don't want to, they don't want that, so.
Okay, so Don, you're going to pursue that, follow up on that?
Okay, thank you.
On the same note, have we heard anything more about the box with all the wires on Gaylord at the intersection of Gaylord and Theater that's just been there forever?
I, I did reach out to AT&amp;T, it's on their repair list. They will not give me a timeframe of when it will be repaired. It's part of a large contract that's repairing them all over the county.
Thank you.
On that same note, Don, I'm getting a lot of complaints, as I stated before to you, that mattress and all that garbage of Orion and the empty vacant lot and the, that you keep saying that you contacting the banks. Maybe it was something we need to put on the agenda and start. If the residents don't apply and don't comply, we give them a ticket. Maybe we need to start giving, issuing tickets to these Comcast, Comcast, the banks. Something we need to do. The city is looking like garbage. Everywhere you turn, there is trash. Piles of trash.
Yeah, that property you're speaking of is behind the gas station there.
Yes.
And the owner of that property did get a letter to remove it. They will be getting a citation if they don't, but as we spoke to is, I, you know, if, if they don't remove it.
We'll keep, we keep citations, keep giving them fines.
No, is the fines.
Just keep giving them fines. Because the resident should not be, you know, backing up to all this garbage constantly.
Tony, your agenda item?
Yes. Well, look, I'd like to approve the MGT Impact Solutions LLC Agreement for Intern Public Works Position, Julius Hansen. In my memo, right, asking us to extend the contract, per the contract, we're extending it to ninety more days, it'll be till August eighth.
Motion would be in order.
All right, so you think, where are we at with our search for a permanent person?
Nothing yet.
In my memo, I'm recommending that we should, we should start working with advertising, trying to give direction to advertise for the Public Works Director position.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Kubal, seconded by Alderman Albert, to approve the, an extension to MGT Impact Solutions LLC, the agreement for intern public works position, Julius Hansen. Questions or comments?
So is that only for August, until August?
Yeah, it extends the contract to August eighth, but there is a clause, a thirty-day notice by either party can cancel.
Or extended.
So then after August, you'll come back?
I'll need to come back after August eighth.
Roll call, Chris.
Mark Zepity?
I'm not really sure. I would have preferred to have it on a monthly basis. I pass.
It, it is a monthly basis.
I thought we said till August.
Well, that's the, the agreement till August, but in the agreement, it's got a thirty-day notice by either party.
To terminate, yeah.
Yeah. I guess I misunderstood what you were looking for.
Your vote?
Uh, pass for now. Think about it for a minute. Go on.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
No.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
You did say we're going to start, we haven't started the search yet for Public Works?
No. The direction I received was for Public Works.
Well, can we put that on next work session, because we need to get moving on that?
Oh, I did ask just for direction tonight, if you wanted to, for me to work with.
I, I was under the impression we were already looking. We needed to get that done.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
I thought we were already looking.
So did I.
No, we were.
The last, last discussion I had with, with everybody, we were talking about the administrator first, and then we start looking for the other open positions. But I.
I think it's.
If the consensus is.
Consensus is to start tomorrow.
I'll.
Reach out.
I'll work with Dave, and we'll get the advertisement out, and we'll send the announcement to everyone to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Department, Julius Hansen. Julius?
Yes, as you know, well, Ten is out of service currently. The theory is it was hit by lightning strike on March ninth. We had that big storm front roll in. That's the theory, have not confirmed that yet. We're still evaluating it, but we have a company, Lane Christensen, working on the job. They pulled the pump, the motor, it's at their yard. I've asked them to take some pictures of it, and so we can kind of see, you know, what the story really is. We are going to get that thing up and running as quickly as possible. This is an emergency-type scenario. We don't want that well to be down any longer than it has to be. So Public Works is here to approve an amount, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars in total for Lane Christensen Company to complete the work on Well Ten.
So moved as presented with the, it's Caton Farm Road, it's not Canton, so.
Excuse me. I'm in interim, so.
Well.
I make those mistakes.
We can still correct them.
Motion by alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, to approve an agreement with Lane Christensen Company for Well Ten Emergency Work for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Questions or comments?
Just one coming. Julius has already filed for the claim for insurance company as a lightning strike for damage, so that's why he's, we're getting photographs and everything else.
My understanding is there is coverage for that, so hopefully if we can document it and the insurance company doesn't give us any grief, it'll get paid for by insurance, so fingers crossed.
Okay, roll call, Chris.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, any, any questions of Public Works? All right, thanks Julius. Moving on to economic and community development, Patrick Ainsworth. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The other item before you is a contract that was discussed at the, in the March regular session for Ron Metzer. It was proposed as I came on board, getting training, getting the lay of the land. He's assisted with several projects, including the Lockport Fire Protection District and, and other miscellaneous projects where we've had him basically being the interim planner, the acting planner. We did make all the requests that were made from the March City Council work session, including the four, four-month notice, as well as the report to the city, Community Economic Development Director directly. So with those notes, I'm happy to take any questions on this item.
Any questions of Patrick?
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin, to approve an independent contractor consulting service agreement with Ronald Metzer. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And again, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number?
Resolution, Chris.
There is a, there is a resolution in the file, even though it does not show up on the agenda as a resolution, so we need a resolution number.
It'll be resolution number twelve ninety-four.
Okay, any questions of Patrick? All right, Pat, thank you. Good evening, you can go home. Thank you. Let's see, number six, seven, and eight were completed, so we'll move on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one item. I'm looking for a motion to approve a notice of intent to award a contract to Purpale Construction USA LLC for the CIPP Water Main Rehabilitation Phase One in the amount of two million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy, seventy cents, and execute all required documents and direct staff. City staff to have Strand and Associates prepare the full IEP submittal package and submit to the IEP for approval. There's a memo, copy of the notice of award, and also a review letter by Strand in the file. This is the next step in the loan approval process for the IEP.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Methvin, to approve a notice of intent to award a contract, Purpale Construction USA LLC for the CIPP Water Main Rehabilitation Phase One in the amount of two million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, or two billion, is that two billion?
Two million.
Two million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy cents, and execute all required documents and direct. City staff to have Strand and Associates Incorporated prepare the full IEP submittal package and submit it to the IEP for approval. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Any questions of city engineer? All right, thanks, Ron. You are excused also. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark?
Evening, Mayor, Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening, but I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions of police chief? Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I have no agenda items, I do have two announcements. We'll be having a meeting of the Veterans and Police Memorial Committee to get ready for Memorial Day, two thousand twenty-five. We'll have the meeting here in the community room of the council chambers at, on April fifteenth, it's a Tuesday, April fifteenth, at eleven AM to discuss the upcoming Memorial Day activities. The second announcement that I have is that we have two vacancies. The first one with Angelo DiSario being elected to the Ward One seat, currently held by Jennifer, that was John Verche's seat. There is an opening in the plant commission, since Angelo did serve on the plant commission for several years. And we also have a opening due to the death of Nick Weiss in the Civil Service Commission for the City of Crest Hill. So any, any of our residents watching on television also that would like to apply, just go to the cityofcresthill.com website, and there's a short resume and application process to fill out, and turn it in to the mayor's office, and we will try to have those positions filled as soon as possible. Other than that, I do not have any other agenda items. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Are those open positions on our Facebook page also? A lot of people on Facebook, you know, about the two openings.
I don't know if it's on Facebook or not. I know it's on the website, and I'm pretty sure Mayor does put it on the social media ones, but.
Can we just check?
Yeah, we can check tomorrow.
Are there any specific requirements a person need to have to serve on?
On either board?
Are there any specific requirements or educational background or experience a person need to have to fill these positions, or it's just your choice?
What's my recommendation? There is applications to fill out. I usually try to pick the best qualified candidate for any position that's open. A lot of times, they have a lot of background, sometimes they do not.
But shouldn't we have a specific description of the, what the position's duties are?
Well, it's been up there for sixteen years, and we don't have a lot of candidates.
Well, I'm, I'm just. How do you assess who's most qualified if you don't have a list of parameters of things that would make a candidate qualified? Qualifications, education perhaps, certification, relevant experience, the whole package?
Well, that's why I do the interview process for the most part. Anybody can apply.
I understand that, but if people don't know what the requirements are for that position, how do they know if they want to apply or not? It's like applying to a job without a job description. People aren't, couldn't just apply because they know what it, I mean, it's a pretty, I mean, we should just be clear on what the jo, what the position entails and.
No description, they just apply, and it's his recommendation.
Again, what, what, could there be more content to it?
Point well taken. A lot of times, people call me, and, you know, they show interest, so I kind of do. Or I call them, that's right, because we don't have people standing in line. And I'm sure every other mayor called them too and reached out, just like I do.
You're sure of that?
I'm probably pretty sure, but that's the way it probably has happened in the past.
But, but do you think they have, what I, what I was suggesting, is, is some kind of a description?
I would hope that most people would kind of watch and see how the plant commission operates, and maybe the civil service would be more, usually, you know, it's retired firemen, policemen, not always, but a lot of times, people that were in administration that did a lot of interviews, so they could interview candidates as part of the civil service process. The police pension board, I always try to find somebody that has some background in finances to be on that position, but it doesn't always happen, Mark.
No, that's fine.
Like I said, they're not standing in line.
As we're sitting here discussing it.
But all they have to do is pick up the phone and call me. All they have to do is come in here and ask to sit down and ask me a couple of questions.
But I, I think we should do as much as we can for people to know what the opening is.
Okay, point well taken. I'll, I'll work on that, okay? I'll see what can happen. There's a lot of things happening right now. We have a lot of big projects going on. Lake Michigan water is huge right now for us. We need to concentrate on these things. I will find some, I will find people that are interested. They have, some of them will reach out to.
We know, we know how that works.
Okay.
Yes, people are there, they're waiting.
There've been people here interested that didn't get considered.
Okay, moving on, city clerk.
There's three hands I saw up.
Chris?
I just have a couple of public announcements. All city offices will be closed on Friday, April eighteenth, for the Easter holiday, and the citywide garage sale will be May fifteenth through May eighteenth. There is a five-dollar fee for a permit. The deadline to submit your application for your address to be on the list is Tuesday, May thirteenth, and lists will be available on May fourteenth. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions of the clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. City treasurer, Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I request approval of our list of bills through March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of three million, four hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Methvin, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And just reporting on this one, no motion required. Regular overtime, regular and overtime payroll from March tenth, two thousand twenty-five through March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, total two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Twenty-three, excuse me. That's all I have for this evening, unless there's any questions.
Questions of city treasurer?
I just have a question. Well, Public Works call. It's about the overtime. I'm still looking for a description of what was done for overtime, but that's, I'll take that up with the director, or in, the intern director.
I, I don't really know how to answer that, Darrell.
No, I say, I, I say I got, I'll take it up with him.
Oh, great, great, okay.
You count the numbers. Just, just don't put five in front of four, and we'll be all right.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks Glenn. Moving on to unfinished business. We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Committee Liaison Reports? City Council Comments? Positive City Council Comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Tina?
Well, I want to wish everybody out there a very happy Easter. Remember, it's a, it's a giving holiday, so spread the love, and if you're really good, the Easter Bunny will show up.
Alderman Supity?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Albert?
Just one last reminder of the Crestle Lions Club Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April nineteenth, at Cheney Park, right near the pool. It'll start promptly at noon. It's for ages zero to ten. So come on out for a, for event. The Easter Bunny will be there, the one that you're talking about, Tina. And then I just want to make another comment about tonight's vote. You know, I know that everybody, that this decision weighed very, very heavily on, on all of us, and it has, basically for the last eighteen months. I, I've said it before, you guys can believe me or not, but I respect every single one of us up here for the work that we put in and the homework that we do. So, you know, as well as the staff, everything that just goes into these big projects. So I just appreciate that we can still shake hands and walk out and maybe, you know, have a coke together or something after future meetings. So, that's it. Thanks.
Chocolate Easter.
Alderman Kuba?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Yeah, just want to wish everybody a happy Easter, and that's it.
Alder Woman Methven?
I just want to say that this has been an eye-opening experience into public life and into local politics, and I feel that I have learned quite a bit from this time that I will take with me into the private sector, far, far into the private sector. But I do appreciate the time that I've been able to spend here, and I think that everyone here has, at the heart of them, the desire for Crest Hill to be great, and we may not be able to all see eye to eye all the time, nor should we, but I think that we all, when we come together, do make Crest Hill great.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Giselle?
To all the residents of Crest Hill, and especially you, what you, to each one of you that sent piles of emails and text messages, and you went out of your way to write, Lentley, emails. I'm not sure if some were read, but I know I print them all, so nobody says that they didn't get them. All I can say is, we tried. I tried. I'm sorry for some of the disrespect that we received last week here, when we were told we lived behind a prison. I'm sorry for some of the disrespect from some people up here. But I promise you, I will continue doing what I can to voice your concerns, no matter what. My heart is heavy because the city did not advertise for it as they should from the beginning. And to all the police and the fire department that they made me feel like I don't care for them, you are wrong. They tried to put words in my mouth that I didn't do. Without our first responders, we'll be nothing. Like I said before, I have a, a son as a policeman, and I lose sleep sometime at night, just thinking about where he's at. But this is what government is about. We agree, we disagree, and like the mayor says, the majority rules. That's it, Mayor.
Public comment. Anyone like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Address is optional. Let the record show no one has approached the podium.
There's somebody.
My name's Mackenzie, and I was up here before, before you guys, and the issue with the squatting is back again, and it's actually closer to my house than it was before. There's people that, that live there, and there's residents, that have an ankle monitor, that are digging up plumbing to get water, and threaten the Public Works team that they were going to dig up the pipes to turn back on the water. Not, let alone the neighbor, the neighbor told me that they're now stealing water from her, her hose. What can we do to maybe like, moving forward, like with all these foreclosures and everything, like maybe board them up, or talk to the bank, I don't know. What we could do about that?
Don Seaman's still there?
I think he, he left after his...
Yeah.
He wanted to...
I mean, it's getting to be unsafe again, so, I mean, I can't walk my dog at night, I can't walk at all. I mean, it is pretty scary.
Yep.
I mean, I, I just hope that we can maybe figure out a way to go around. I know the bank probably owns most of them that are probably in foreclosure. I know, I think the house is going to be going up for auction in May, so I don't even know how that's going to work if they're in the house already squatting.
Okay, how about at the, at the end of this meeting, you speak with our Police Chief, and then I'm sure we can, he can give you the number of our Building Department, Don Seaman also, and you can probably, are you available during the day if you were to come in?
Yeah.
And you can talk with him also, but I think the Police Chief Ed will, could talk to you after the meeting. How's that?
And if you need any information on squatters, I'm your lady, because we had one, and I got rid of them when everybody else said they couldn't. So just let me know.
Yeah, we have a few that are keep popping up, so hopefully we can take care of it before it gets, they just keep doing it. Because I mean, if they, they know they can get away with it, they're going to keep doing it. They already did property damage. The garage is broken, like, all shattered, and there's busted-out windows and all that kind of stuff, so.
I've already talked to the chief on this red, address, and I've talked to Don Seaman also. They're going to be working on it, so hopefully we can get it taken care of.
Just give me a call, Ed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think Stuart Sylfer, two oh five, two six, I think just to carry on a little further with what she was talking about, I think the question comes around to, comes around, I'm sorry, let me, I'll try to speak up.
Okay, here you go.
It's, it's hard enough to hear back there, so I, you know, you guys kind of feel how I, you know, I sit back there all the time. I think one of the things that I have a question about is, is how far does the city's enforcement actually go? I know that when the Police Department issues citations for speeding or parking and things like that, those are against state codes, and those go to the county, to the, a judge at the county's office. For several months, I've, I've sat here through the city administrative hearings, okay, and it's kind of a joke. I mean, I hear the same people, the same companies, the same entities called week, or month, after month, after month. They don't even show up. I see people that come here and almost kind of laugh at the, at, at what it is. They're, they're being issued citations, and they just kind of laugh. I, I watched one guy, actually, the, the deputy chief told him, we'll address your thing at the end, and he walked out. I, I don't think that anybody in the city takes you guys serio, takes, I don't think any resident in the city takes the city serious. Where do your authority lie? How far can it go? Because it really seems to me is that you have no teeth. You have businesses that are operating without business licenses, okay, and you can't do anything about it? You have businesses that haven't paid their places for eating tax? You spoke to an owner. Where'd you go with that? Did they pay up? I mean, it, it's almost coming, becoming kind of a joke, and I think that something needs to be addressed, so that you guys have more teeth, and people take this city seriously. Homeowners get citations for putting a fence up without a building permit. They get citations for doing things, that people do things without permits, and nothing happens. Where's your authority go? Because it really says to me, you guys are just governing things, and everybody in the city knows it. Thank you.
Okay, the Administrative Hearing Officer was put in place in two thousand and nine. The goal was for compliance. We have a lot of people that have complied over the years. There are people that do turn their backs to us. There are people that do not follow through with the rules. There is a process in place. When it leaves here, it goes to a debt collection service, and they try to get the collections paid from the individuals as our Building Department tries to fix the compliance issues that are in place. After that, it would have to go through our Legal Department with our city attorney, to go down to Will County Courthouse for further action. All these things take time. We're dealing with this now, with one individual for the places for eating tax, so hopefully that will kind of set the stage for us going forward. But I thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Linda?
Linda Dyke, seventeen hundred Kelly. I just think that the neighbors should be aware, if they see a house that's vacant for a long period of time, or maybe not that long, that we can get something in place, or call the bank, or whoever owns their property, and get it boarded up. Because this particular property, they busted out a window and got in, and they're turning her water on. This lady was at work and came home, and her water spigot was probably running all day. And what I found kind of offensive was, the officer took forty-five minutes to get there. She had called Scott, and then called my phone. I got there before he did, and she showed me her water spigot was on, and when the officer came, he said, "Are you sure that you didn't leave this on yourself?" When she has a camera, and they snuck, they know what they're doing, close to the house. They even had bedding and mattresses delivered there. The other neighbor showed me a video. They had a truck there, where they changed the locks on the doors and everything. And it's just, it's, it's hard when you see a resident who's been there forever, get asked a question like, "Are you sure you didn't turn your water on?" She goes, "No, I was at work all day." But now this lady has a huge water bill. But the screens broke out, they're trashing the house in there. There has to be something where these places get boarded up, so they can't enter them and do what they're doing. And also, there's buckets out there too, where they're using for the washroom. And I always thought when there's no water at a residence, they can't live in it. Isn't that inhabitable, according to our building codes? I know Don loves it, but that's just something I think should be...
Is this the same house that Mackenzie was talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ed, you know the address, correct?
He knows, and Don knows.
Okay.
Thanks.
And again, like we did with that one house that we dealt with, when we dealt with the bank, if we know the bank has possession, if we can engage the bank to get a certification that we own the house, nobody is to be in there, even if it is boarded up, and we find somebody who claims to have a right to be in there, it's trespassing if our officers go in and try to forcibly remove somebody. But if they've got permission, our officers have permission from the owner to actually, that nobody should be in there until further notice, I think that will help give our police force some more ability to prevent somebody from going in there when they're not supposed to be.
And they showed a lease, but the lady who lived there is deceased, and the house is in her name. I looked it up on the county site. So she certainly didn't give a lease. It's a fictitious lease, and he says, "Oh, I got the key to open the door." Well, sure you do, could change the lock. And...
I, I had a similar thing in Rockdale. There is a whole underground community that knows how to do this, that you just have to be on top of, because that's what they do. They come up with fake papers. They try to go in and turn the water on, and say, "Here's my last water bill." We had a situation where the house had been vacant, and they busted in, and they found an old, or an old notice and water bill from the village, so they brought that back in and say, "Hey, here's the turn-on charge, turn on the water with the old bill." But obviously, somebody at Village Hall kind of raised an eyebrow, and they prevented it. But again, it takes hyper vigilance from the city and all you residents to stay on top of this, because otherwise, you know, it makes it more challenging.
Well, I would think they would want to see some identification before they turned water on it. I mean, I really would think they would do that, because how do you, unless you know the person?
Well, they were supposed to bring the lease in here today to get the water turned back on. They never showed up.
But they should have some personal ID for themselves.
Oh, yeah.
And I mean, because I, I, let me tell you, I, I remember, when we had the one by us, I remember, nine months going back and forth before we could, I got them out, but I got them out.
Well, I got mine out, all mine.
Okay, Mike, there is a need for an executive session?
There is. Under five ILCS one twenty-two, C one, Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Methven, to go into executive session for two C one. Roll call, please, Chris?
Marcus Supity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Mathen?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at ten twenty-two PM.